To open the planning board meeting, today is Tuesday, January 26 at 7:15 PM. We have a unique agenda today with the planning board. We have a joint, we are joining in the conservation committee at 8:30 for 30 minutes. While they review their portion of 654 Main Street, we thought that would be the most efficient way for us to hear what is going on with conservation's review of it, along with the independent consultant that is hired as well for the work that they review as well. So we're going to start at 7:15 with updates for 15 minutes. Then we're going to go over the subdivision rules and regs with our legal counsel. And 8 o'clock, we'll take a break to join the conservation committee, returning at 8:30 to open the hearing for 654 Main Street. Thereafter, we'll do some meeting minutes and some talk about the master plan implementation committee, if we have time, members of the planning board. I put that in there, but if we are running late, we can postpone it to our next meeting. With me tonight is, you have Brian Zekely, who kicked it off, who is a town planner. We have Diagurius, who is the vice chair and also the secretary, according to the Massachusetts state laws, for the planning board. We have Maureen Meister. And we have, you'll also see Nancy, who's on there, our recording secretary. For everyone who's here, I'd like you to know that we are being recorded by Windcam. We get broadcasted on Windcam. They put us up on their website. And so if you speak, just so you know, you are being recorded. So welcome, everyone. To kick things off, Brian, do you want to go through some of your updates that you have this evening?
Sure, yeah. I think the one thing that I wanted, and this is in my weekly updates on Friday, and it had to do with the Shannon property. And the Shannon property was most recently, it was a, this is land off of Forest Circle that has access off of Fallon Road in Stonem. So, and it was a location of this proposed 300 unit, or 296 unit, 40B, known as Forest Ridge. And Ron Bonvy has approached the town, wanting to try to do what he did previously with the ARSD and putting the attached residential cluster overlay district, which was what he did for Winning Farm. He wants to do the same, or he's trying to do the same for this property that was, that was the Shannon property. I don't know what else to call it. I don't want to call it Forest Ridge, because it was a failed attempt at a development. And so I'm, I'll just be referring to it as the Shannon property. But, so he's proposing a Winning Farm-style community, something like in the 40-unit range. And he wants, if invited, would love to have a conversation about doing that overlay district on the property. That's probably the biggest update. The other, another update is the Washington and Swanton, is that the draft RFP has been circulated. And we're going to ask for a couple more days, so that we can go over that more fully with comments from the board and others at our next meeting, February 9. And then we'll give comments to the board on that Washington and Swanton draft RFP. And that's all the updates I have for now.
So I have a question, Brian. If that is, are we at some risk of this draft just moving forward without our comments?
I find that highly unlikely.
So I'm going to be real direct. With whom have you spoken?
The Chair of the Select Board, Mike Bettencourt, has assured that planning board, that there are, the boards that he, that he wouldn't necessarily move forward without, is the, the boards that were, it was sent to this past Friday, I believe, which was the planning board, the Housing Partnership Board, and I believe Design Review. And then I think it's also actually going to the Affordable Housing Trust. So those are the four groups that he, that he and the Select Board want comment from. So I cannot imagine that they would just, you know, based on two or three days, not do that. That just doesn't make sense.
Okay, so you have his assurance that we will be able to give our comments from our, that we'll provide at our next meeting.
I mean, I have not, I mean, I don't, I don't see why not, sure.
No, but he's, I mean, I don't, that's, I don't understand what you're saying. So has he said that, that his, he has told you that since, I don't know, since this draft was circulated? You sent the draft to the planning board on Friday at midday.
Correct.
So at that point, there was, we were supposed to get comments in before we would meet again, which obviously wasn't going to happen. So we were in a position of not submitting comments. So in, since that time, has Mike told you that we would be able to provide our comments from our next meeting, and that the draft would be held until that time?
I have not gotten confirmation that we, from him, that, I mean, there's nothing happening in two weeks. It was just like, that's, that seemed like a reasonable amount of time to have comments. But I have not gotten assurance from him. But the only reason we sent it out was to, or, you know, was to get comments from those boards. So I don't, so no, I haven't gotten assurance from him. He didn't tell me that. I didn't say, can we have three more days? And he said yes. I just know that the point of sending it out to those boards and committees was to get comments from them, and I can get assurance.
Thank you, Brian. I might be concerned with the whole situation of the putting a deadline on us and stuff with everything we have going on. Is I know Cheryl is sitting on that. And for all those who joined us, Cheryl Wolf and Heather Hannan have joined us, so the full board is here. Is sitting on that, however, without the board talking about it, which none of us have talked about it, except to brief updates here and there, but actually about the RFP, that then the planning board has not taken a position until we talk about it, and we come to a consensus. So I just want to make sure that that is explicitly clear, that even though, you know, we are, no, any of the boards or commissions that we are liaisons to, we cannot take a position of the, the planning board until the whole planning board speaks about it together at a table. So I just want to make sure that we can get that in before anything proceeds.
I will get that assurance.
Thanks, Brian. And just to confirm, on the 9th was the day we were planning to most likely continue 654. We had discussed in our last meeting, and I just want to make sure that we have adequate time for that before, we have adequate time for that alongside if we're adding in Washington Swanton RFP review.
All right, I'll just ask one final question then, related to this, I guess, on my side. Is that how much time would you like for Washington and Swanton, if you could have it? Would it be a full hour, or can we do this in 30 minutes, based upon, you know, reviews between now and then?
Members of the planning board, do you know how long you'd like to take to discuss it? Have any of you had a chance to review it? You know, it came in late on Friday.
I did, I thought a half hour would be sufficient. But, I mean, you're, you'll be running the meeting, so it's up to you, too.
I know, I set the agenda. I just wanted to make sure I gave you an opportunity to provide your input.
Yeah, this is, I've also reviewed it, and I think a half hour should be fine.
Great, thank you.
I do want to go back, because this is the first time, I think, in public anybody's heard about Bondi proposing a project off Forest Circle. Is that what he's got in mind, going to be, I mean, let's face it, the last unit's now for sale. It's for $2 million. Is this going to be another luxury housing development?
This, from what he has said, he wants to do exactly what he did.
So I would call that a luxury housing development.
Agreed.
Okay, I just want to be clear about that.
Yeah, I see, there's a lot to be, there's a lot to talk about there, in terms of what's possible and what, you know, were we happy with the Winning Farm development? Will we change anything about the ARSD? You know, those are all questions that, you know, there's a lot going on with that property.
Just for the record, just because we're right now in public, and it's really important. Of course, the planning board does not approve subdivisions any longer that are cul-de-sacs. So that was actually in part in response to the development on a site such as that one. So I just want to make that a statement. We don't have to discuss it further, but I just want to say that a standard subdivision wouldn't work over there any longer. So we should all be aware of that fact. It's a very difficult site, anyway, but with these idea, this business of a dead end off a very narrow street was something that was, you know, something that we addressed with our subdivision regs. And we're going to be discussing subdivision regs in just a few minutes. But those subdivision regulations were adopted with a great deal of thought and concern about some of the parcels such as that one. So I'll just make that statement and leave it there.
Thank you, Maureen. Brian, did you have any other updates that you wanted to go through?
Um, no, not at this time.
Thank you, Brian. I just wanted also, because we mentioned it every once in a while, Brian noted it today in his updates, that on Friday, Brian does provide updates of things that have happened inside of his department, that he sends to members of the planning board. I just, those are available, if you'd like those, alongside to also keep everyone informed. Lisa Wong also does weekly, on Friday, newsletters of some of the things that are going on on a more general level. Brian obviously deals with more of the land use in town, but Lisa does more of the general issues, what the town is currently doing, and regulations and business support issues are all in that newsletter. So I just want to make sure you knew about that. And if you want copies of that, you can just email Brian and ask to be put on that, or you can also email the town manager's office to be put on her newsletter, her newsletter as well, to get updates, although the planning board likes to have these updates as well when we're at our table. I don't actually have any updates myself right now that I am aware of. We have, we have been asked to see if next on the night, we may get some youth that may want to come listen to our meeting. And just so everyone knows, that that may be taking place for part of their badge work that they're doing. And we're a little bit ahead of schedule, which is unusual. But if we are ready, as we don't have to stay exactly to it, we can move towards subdivision rules and regs, unless anyone has any other updates they would like to go through.
I would love to, if it doesn't put us too much off of schedule. So I just want to make a brief report. So I am the planning board liaison with the Housing Partnership Board. And the Housing Partnership Board has been having internal discussions about how best to ensure that affordable housing, which is part of inclusionary housing rules, both in the CBD and on, now in GBD 2 and 3, and, and future developments, how the Housing Partnership Board could best be represented. And one of the ideas that I brought up was that we have a more formal request that they be consulted with. And I know in the past, we have added some committees that we wanted to be consulted with into our zoning bylaws, but things like when we do subdivision approvals, or when there are things that the ZBA does, that it would be nice if the Housing Partnership Board were formally requested to provide their advice or their insight on affordable housing components. And I think there's, the Housing Partnership Board is working on some policy documents and things like that, so that it might be more obvious to the other boards how to ensure that our affordable housing components are appropriate and follow DHC requirements. So I just want to bring that up as a little update.
Thank you, Diab. Any other members of the planning board with any updates for any of your liaison work, or the other boards and committees you sit on, on behalf of the planning board? All right, with that, we will move on to our 7:30 agenda item, the subdivision rules and regulations with edits from legal counsel.
Art will be on momentarily.
So we're a few minutes behind. If you want to take a minute while we wait for Art to join us, to pull up his recommendations, so the public can see it.
Here he comes.
Good evening, Art, welcome. So for everyone, this is Art Krieger, who is a town council. The planning board has asked him to review our subdivision rules and regulations. We've had some things throughout the time that Art's been working with us on subdivisions that we wanted his input on how to address, and issues that he saw when he reviewed it, that he would like us to take into consideration. Go, take us away, Art, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. So in 6743, the first section you have up there, you see in the existing language, it says, "For roads that will remain private, the applicant keeps the title, keeps the fee interest, as well as maintenance responsibilities. When it's released from subdivision control, the responsibilities get turned over to the Property Owners Association." The problem that emerged in some old subdivisions in town is what happened to the fee? What happened to the type, the actual ownership of the roads? That didn't get transferred and has stayed with the original developer, who may or may not be responsible, that, who may or may not take responsibility, conduct the maintenance, may not be around. So this notion that the applicant retains the fee in the roads until the very end seemed to lead to that problem. So if we go to the proposed language, the first red line change there is just cleaning up language that didn't seem to go anywhere. The second sentence, the red, red sentence, the notation, that was simply moved up from the end of the paragraph, because it goes with the first part that talks about streets that will become public ways. Then, then you get to the second case, roads that will not become public ways, that will remain private. So that was just a reorganization. So this is a little wordier than I was hoping it would be, but I hope this gets it done. For private ways, the applicant that is, when it conveys the lots, it conveys the road in front of that lot, or to the Property Owners Association before the, before the last lot goes out. So that no matter what the, how long it takes to sell the lots, in either case, go back up a little bit, Brian. In either case, the applicant does not retain any of the roads after all the lots have been conveyed. After all the lots have been conveyed, either the homeowners association owns them, or the homeowners themselves own them. In any event, you've got somebody on the scene to take responsibility at that point. And then number two, that was the title part of it, number two there at the top of the page is the maintenance responsibilities. Brian, if you want to go down a little bit. So in this case, the, so the maintenance, so the applicant retains maintenance responsibilities until, until those responsibilities get assigned to the Property Owners Association, which happens before the project is released from subdivision controls. That, that concept is the same. Because you can see the red line language that struck out there after subdivision control in the middle. It used to be, if you just read the black and then the struck-out language, retain maintenance responsibilities until the project is released from subdivision control, at which time the responsibility will be turned over to the Property Owners Association. So we didn't really change that concept. Just tried to make the language work in the revised sentence. So the real change is in, is title. The applicant should not retain title after the last lot is gone, because the applicant, again, may be, maybe nowhere to be found.
Could I, could I ask a really quick question here?
Please.
So the first part implies that there may not necessarily be a Property Owners Association? Is, will there always be a Property Owners Association? Because the second part about maintenance only talks about giving it to the Property Owners Association. But if the title is conveyed to the individual owners, and there isn't a Property Owners Association, then there doesn't seem to be a clear assignation of maintenance responsibilities.
Well, I would say that, well, first of all, I don't know whether there's always a Property Owners Association. But I would say that if the owners own the roads, and there's no Property Owners Association, then the owners have the maintenance responsibility just by virtue of owning them. If nobody else has the maintenance responsibilities, then the owners have them by, almost, sort of by default, if they're the owners of the roads.
Okay, so in that sense, if the conveyance of the title also conveys the main, conveys the maintenance responsibility, is that second part about maintenance necessary?
Let me think, convey title? Yes, at least, well, yes, it is. Because what that says is that the applicant keeps the maintenance responsibilities until the project is released from subdivision control at the latest. But that is, when the applicant sells off a lot with the, with the piece of road in front of it, the homeowner at that point is not obligated to maintain that piece of the road. The applicant maintains all the roads until, until the end.
Okay.
You don't want the maintenance responsibility, you know, fragmented like that, and, and individual homeowners buying a lot in a subdivision, they're going to assume that the developer is going to finish the subdivision, meaning maintain the roads until the end of the process. They didn't think, they didn't think they bought the obligation to repave the stretch in front of their house. So that's the point of the second part.
I think it's good, Art, thank you.
Well, it's not easy to think about all the permutations. Diab raised some good questions. Thank you, Maureen, for that. If anybody else has...
We live on a private road, and I know we've got a volunteer organization, an organization where people pay voluntarily. It's kind of crazy, most of them do, but we have to maintain our road. And there are a lot of private ways in town. Anyway, we set this up after, it wasn't just maintaining, although maintaining the road itself isn't a small point, eventually roads need to be paved again. But the bigger point was, almost all these new developments, and we're hearing about one again off Forest Circle, they have major, major drainage problems. So these have been built more recently with commonly shared drainage, catch basins, or whatever. And they've got to get, they've got to get cleaned out.
Well, I am going to state that I still, if, if there isn't the possibility of a, if a Property Owners Association does not exist, then I don't know who the developer assigns maintenance to. If it's not automatically conveyed by the title, because we're going to have the developer wait until the subdivision, its project is released, then at the release of the project, they are only, according to this, they are only able to release it when they assign it to the Property Owners Association. So maybe it's clear to others, but to me, it still seems like perhaps either to the Property Owners Association, or to the lot owners, just adding that extra phrase.
Diab, this is, this is Beth. Isn't there another provision somewhere else in the subdivision regulations that requires the homeowners association to be established? I thought that was our goal moving forward, is that we wouldn't get out of any of these subdivision processes without HOA.
I think that's right. If you go down, Brian, I don't know how much you've reproduced here of, of this whole section.
No, this is just the, just the change here that we were talking about. And I can bring up the, this only goes to what we talked about, which was up, you know, up to 6745. And then the new section, but I can certainly get the regs up.
Well, why don't, why don't everyone just move on? And I'll just go and look at it right now, so we don't waste time on something that might not be pertinent.
Okay, 6745 is a simple change that Mina, Mina suggested, which is, there's, the town, as opposed to town meeting, means the town and, and the select board. So we broaden this to, in case the select board vote is after the town meeting, if the town meeting authorized the select board to accept, then it could be the select board vote, that's the end of the process. So that's actually when the town, when the streets would be accepted. So rather than refer to town meeting, we just refer to the town more generally, meaning town meeting or select board. Now, I know there, there are a number of, I mean, not enough, there may be other changes that are appropriate in the regs as a whole, but that's a much bigger conversation. So I don't know, the board was expecting far-reaching changes here. This, this, the first one was the one that probably had identified in a particular set of old subdivisions in town, and then the other smaller ones we just made along the way. But this was not a full, a full dress review of the subdivision reg. And if the board, if the board wants that, that's going to require some extensive conversations with Brian and Beth, to see what other issues they think need fixing. Which we're happy to do, but we didn't do it this time.
Personally, I'd like to see the subdivisions that are outstanding closed out, crazy as it may seem.
Well, I guess the question is, why, why haven't they been?
Well, what's the answer?
I, I don't, I don't know.
Brian?
Sorry, having trouble with me. So Art and I have, so the directive from the planning board to Art and I was to, you know, find the two, find two subdivisions that at least have some type of chance of us getting anything, if there's any money in the kitty, if there's work to be done. Through what we've seen, there, there's, there are almost all the work, or most of, most of the work that needs to get done, there's no, there isn't money enough to do it. It's a question of, what is the game plan? And that's the conversation, you know, the game plan is potentially going after these people, or, you know, to make this, you know, to make this subdivision whole. And I don't, I don't know what, what that looks like, if that's part of the strategy that we want. I, I don't know what I don't even know, how about that? So...
Well, we're, we've been asking about it, and I've been asking about it, basically, from, I've been on this board for 21 years. When I came on, we had subdivisions that hadn't been closed out. And we knew even then that the, basically, the developer flew the coop. So we've had problems for a long time.
Well, we have made progress. I mean, Brian has certainly looked at a number of those subdivisions, and...
We either, look, we either need to find money, or legally go after these people.
That's right.
So it's not like, I mean, yeah.
Who makes that decision? Is that, is that us?
That's probably why this hasn't happened, is that it just, you know, I don't think that's, yeah, I just don't know how to, how to do that.
But the authority, that's with the planning board, that's 100% ours.
Well, then we should make a decision.
Well, I thought we had. I keep asking for reports and reviews, and we're not getting them.
Well, we got, well, my recollection is that we were, last, my recollection, there was a spreadsheet which was circulated, which showed the outstanding subdivisions. And I believe it also indicated where there were funds. And I don't know whether it indicated whether the funds were sufficient to cover what was lacking for the closeouts. So at that point, I think, am I wrong in that, Brian?
No, no, you're, you're not.
So at, at that point, the board has this list of projects, and so we should make the decision to select those projects we think need funds, or whether we want to, you know, get town attorneys, town council to go after them. So I think that's all on this board.
Well, actually, how we left it as a board was that council was going to meet with Brian and go through them and figure out which ones are, which ones we, what's the next step to deal with it?
Right, that's right.
We want to close them all out. We don't want any of them left and things hanging and...
Right.
Walls on, you know, in public ways and stuff. We want it all taken care of. The question is, and which is not our expertise, which is more arts, is to have Brian review that with, with legal counsel, and come up, come back to the planning board with a plan of how to go forward. But that, we need to save for another time. Can we go back to our subdivision rules and regs edits? And, but, I mean, Art's here, will add it to our agenda for another meeting and come back, and hopefully Art, Brian will come up with a strategy of how to close all these open subdivisions out. It's not that many, I should, it sounds like there's 100 of them. But we do need to address it and get them closed up, and however, we need to do that.
Well, I don't, I don't know if the problem with those unclosed subdivisions is the problem addressed in this paragraph, the retention of title by the developer, or if it's some other problems.
They do have their problems. Brian can meet with you and go through it, and then come, give us some advice on how to proceed, is what we're looking for.
All right, so Brian, I can, I can meet with you anytime, this week or next week.
Great, we'll figure that out.
And so, in terms of, from the planning board's perspectives of the edits that are recommended, do we have any questions or concerns?
I thought they were good, but I'm, I am, I have to say, I have my print version of the subdivision regs, and I'm looking at the, through the table of contents, I'm looking for the, I know Beth is right. I remember, I was there, that the requirement for the homeowners association...
I have, I have done, I've searched through there. I, I have, I have done, I've searched through there and I can tell you exactly where they're located. Um, so. There are. There are only a couple of places which actually describe the requirements for an association. Um, and the first one is. Oh, that's not the one. Uh, six, seven. Nope, sorry. I'm, oh, okay. So if we go to, I'm sorry, six, eight, one. Which is on page forty-eight. I see you're there, Brian. So just go to page forty-eight.
What's that? I got six, page forty-eight, six point what?
Uh, it's split, it's six, eight, one, C, I believe. And subsection, Roman numeral two.
Oh, yeah.
And it says, establish a property owners association, blah, blah, as required by the board decision. So that implies it's, it's only required if the board wants it, but there's also a further statement. Somewhere that I have found which talks about, you need to form a property association if there are common. Um, there is common property which requires maintenance. And I somehow have. Lost that already.
Well, certainly, uh, that subset, uh, C subsection two is, um, one of the irrelevant sections.
I know.
It's in here.
Yeah, covenants include the report. This is six, seven, four, ten. Talks about property owners association, accept all responsibility for maintenance of roads and infrastructure. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that was actually, that's a really important one because that's a must include, um.
Right, but that's, that's.
That was really important to us because we were finding that these developments, uh, were be, we were approving these subdivisions. With, as I say, these major, um, drainage infrastructure and there was no way to compel, uh, the owners around the. Um, it, these were cul-de-sacs and they were getting, you know, they were flooded, they'd get flooded. They had these drainage things. And, um, as I say, typically they were just giant, um, retaining, um, base, what? Retention, uh, whatever, structure. So anyway, that was why we, uh, six point, seven point, four point ten was really important for us.
Yeah, it, it looks like there, that, the, the first one I pointed out is the only one which describes when there's a requirement for them.
That's it. No, that's it.
Yeah, the definition of property owners association, which is two point one nine. Says it's responsible for maintenance of common land and shared facilities as set forth in the covenants. And, and may not be dissolved. So the real, it really comes under the board's discretion whether there needs to be a property owners association. And I trust the board to do the right thing there.
Well, I will also add, um, I, oh man. We, I have not in 21 years as a town meeting member, ever seen a private way turned over to the town. It's not happening any longer.
So I, I withdraw my, my, um, comments on the need to update that part of the, of Art's edits.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from members of the board?
We, we still need to get to that last one, three, five, one.
Go ahead, Art.
Okay, so this, it's not red line because it's a brand new subsection as, as, as it says. And I thought this was the sensible place to put it. Um, which I think is on, I think three point five is the, uh, applications for. Uh, a- a- the general requirements for application. Brian, maybe you can confirm that. So this is, most of the site plan criteria have to do with construction of a certain amount of square feet in various zones. But you recall the last one is just for grading of more than six, changing the grade more than six percent over 500 square feet. Uh, and this is, this was, this came up in Abbey Road. Do they need, do they need site plan approval? Um, our conclusion was that they do. And since this is key to the grading, it was independent of any construction or whether construction ever happens at all. Um, it's not appropriate to leave it to the building permit stage. It should be done when the grading plan in the subdivision is approved. Of course, if they change the grading after the subdivision approval, they've got to come back to you for an amendment of the subdivision plan anyway. And if, if that's, if that's the point where the site plan is triggered, fine. But if the site plan approval is required for grading shown on the plans that come to you. Then that's when they should also go to the ZBA for site plan approval. And so it's a fairly straightforward provision here that you see.
A technical question for you, Brian. On Abbey Road, they had the houses located in a different location. And when they moved them, they changed the grading because they made the, the houses bigger and had to change the screen to those buildings. Wouldn't that have triggered site plan review?
It depends if, where the baseline is and that's, um, I don't, I think there's no doubt that from where it was at the beginning to where it is now. It's certainly more than six percent. And the question was, uh, the applicant of Abbey Road. Figured that the gr- whatever was there right now, he couldn't change it more than six percent. So he's saying that, you know, he didn't change it more than six percent, but Art, uh, but Art is saying that, that doesn't matter. It's, it's the current applicant plus the previous applicant together is prob- is more than six percent. And that's probably what could require site plan review because subdivision cannot dictate site plan review.
So Brian, if the applicant has changed the grading from what was shown on the plans because they moved the houses. Didn't the applicant have to come back to you for, to this board for amended subdivision approval?
This is Beth. My understanding has always been that subdivision creates the road and creates the lots. But that the planning board does not necessarily have jurisdiction over anything within the lots. Those lots are created, um, you know, and, and the lot, and the lots are conforming. Then all the developer has to do is go get a building permit. The subdivision does not necessarily include a review of the design, location of houses. I mean, all developers will provide that information, but there's nothing, my understanding was always there's nothing. That requires them to get a building permit for whatever exactly is shown on a subdivision plan.
That, that's clearly correct, but, um, I, but the. I think the issue is if the lots are being regraded from the existing on a subdivision plan. In addition to the road being regraded, of course, does this board review the grading of the lot? The runoff and drainage and grading of the lots?
So typically the, like, everybody does it differently. Um, we try to encourage people to keep the, the drainage. For the lots and the roadway separate because then you run into this issue, uh, where if things change on the lots. Um, in the case of Abbey Road, those things were commingled. Um, and so the developer for the lots has provided updated drainage calculations. That show that even though they're increasing the footprint of the house, that they have added an additional infiltration system to. Um, to mitigate that drainage. And that, that's, I don't think that would require them to come back through the subdivision process. Because it really is only dealing with the, the house lot itself.
Okay.
So one quick thing, Art, I would imagine, in order to actually, if, if subdivision is, the whole point of subdivision is to create loads, uh, roads and lots. The idea is that there will have, there was obviously grading involved in that. That's what was approved by. The engineering department as well, as, as well as, uh, our, our consultants. So I mean, as we went through, there was a lot of time and effort specifically related to those, you know, to all of the, a, a lot of it really is just. Grading and infiltration, uh, uh, so I guess it's like, if that's not site plan review. Meaning the, the planning board approved that grading and, and the walls that were associated with that grading. Those walls are being built and, uh, there's, there's some additional pre-grading. But I think the point is that what's, what's really the difference between the review that we did through subdivision? And, and another site plan review. I guess I, I understand that they should be separate, but maybe the idea is that we shouldn't be having both of those in subdivisions. Meaning the idea of this grading be part of, uh, the zoning bylaw, I'm sorry.
Well.
The idea, yeah, how, what do you feel about the idea of a grading? What, as it relates, you know, this specific thing related to subdivision, why, why should we, or why should we go through this twice? Or the applicant should go through it twice.
Subdivision control and zoning are, are separate. And neither one speaks for the other. Uh, but this is sort of the inherent problem of this part of the site plan review. It's, it's key, it, it, it addresses grading irrespective of construction. And just because that grading comes in the context of a subdivision. I mean, if, if the ZBA is really supposed to review anytime somebody's changing a lot by more than six percent over 500 feet. Then the fact that it's also being reviewed as part of a larger subdivision by this board shouldn't change things. But the, I mean, this is, this is the box of that, uh, created by that section of the bylaw.
Um, what do you feel about that box? Cause I don't particularly like it.
Well, it's aimed at non-subdivisions as well, of course, which could be in, in conjunction with construction. Or it could be just somebody's regrading a lot, just creating a, a big sledding hill on, on, on their lot. Uh, and it's gonna create runoff problems. Um, you know, it just, some, some lot all by itself. No, no subdivision, no house being built, just they want to regrade it. You know, the, the ZBA wanted jurisdiction over that, I guess.
No, no, we, that was, that was us.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry. So you want.
We were amended a town meeting that, that be reviewed. And Tom agreed that that should be reviewed as part of.
Okay, so, right, so you, so you wanted that reviewed, right, by the ZBA. If you want to say, I mean, seven, five, one, seven could be amended to say other, you know. Unless it's going through review as a subdivision under the, by the planning board. But it doesn't say that. So to me, you have to apply it. The other problem with that, of course, is what if, what if it's done in two pieces? Somebody shows four percent grade change in their subdivision plan. And then the buyer of the house lot moves the house and regrades another four percent. What do you do? That's essentially their, their, the applicant's position on Abbey Road is that looking only at what they've done, it's not more than six percent.
To be honest, I don't actually see how having both. I don't know that this language art helps us in that instance. Because there's nothing which says that. You can't buy a lot from a subdivision and regrade it. We don't have any language which says you have to pay attention to the old grading. Which has been done, you know, within this amount of time.
Yeah, Dea, you're right. It doesn't attempt to address that. This addresses only where the subdivision plan shows more than six percent over 500.
Right, right.
It doesn't address the segmentation issue, the doing it in, the doing it in pieces issue.
And I'm looking at the subdivision regs and I don't know, all I think the subdivision's rig says, you gotta show us your grading. And the grading has to be appropriate for roads. And it doesn't really say much about any limitation on the grading done elsewhere on the lot. Unless I missed it. So they could grade everything away if they wanted to. And we'd have to just base that on some sort of a subjective criteria if we felt that was appropriate or not. But I don't see a six percent. I just see street stuff.
Right, because the subdivision regs are intended to cover the construction of the roadway. And the zoning is intended to cover the issues on the lots. So.
Yes.
So developers often can, you know, make it almost more confusing by providing any information about what's happening in the lots. Because technically under subdivision, they're not required to do that.
But if they need to.
Go ahead. And you, Dea, in your situation, what you just described, this would actually work sensibly while, while you are looking at the roads. Uh, and the lay, and the layout of the lots, uh, the zoning board would be looking at the grading of the lots that are shown on the plan.
I think that would work as long as this. If this, yeah, right. Um, the only thing is, what if the, yeah. If they're going to grade, and I imagine they might, I don't know when the, all of the, um. Drainage stuff goes in. That goes in before they sell the lots. That's part of. I know that for Abbey Road, we saw lots of diagrams of drainage systems that were put up during the subdivision. Um, and those are drainages for the lots, not for the roads. Am I right about that?
No, so in, in the case of Abbey Road, they designed drainage systems that took drainage both from the roads and the lots into one. They made assumptions about the footprint of what those houses would be, um, and they designed the drainage system around that.
And they designed.
As I said before, that, that's really not our preference and, um, you know, ideally you have the drainage for the road. Completely separate from any drainage from the houses because then, you know, you get into the whole homeowners association issue and, um, but, you know, that's just the way. That, that applicant wanted to handle it. Um, but, you know, ideally, again, ideally you'd have one drainage system for the roadway. And then every, every house would have independent of each other, a drainage system for their, um, for their rooftop runoff and impervious area.
Okay.
I'm gonna jump in real quick. I'm sorry to interrupt everyone. We are supposed to be joining CONCOM right now at eight oh one.
Heather, so I just, um, been, uh, I've been emailing back and forth with Zeke. He's been having problems. So it looks like they're gonna try to join our meeting actually. And, um, yeah. So it looks like they're gonna try to join our meeting. So I think we just hold tight for a minute.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll discuss until they join us, right?
Heather, Heather, when they join you, do you want me available later this evening to come back to this issue?
Um, I think it would be beneficial, but if you are busy, Art, I know. We probably won't get to it till nine thirty probably, so it's pretty late.
Fine, as long as, as long as maybe if Brian can give me 10 minutes notice.
Okay.
Sure.
I, I.
Just as a matter of process, so it looks like we've got some agreement on the first portions or drafts or whatever they are. Um, that are presented to us. And I believe we need to, um, adopt those in a hearing. And I'd like to schedule that. And I don't know if Art needs to be here, but that's a question, um, because I think we ought to move forward.
Yep, so we just need to schedule the hearing, post it and do, um, those steps required to, uh, take it into consideration.
Do we, Art, do we, or do Heather or Brian, somebody, do we, does Art need to be here? Right, uh, it would be a pretty, I think a pretty short hearing. But, um, and you know, these little subdivisions keep coming around. So I think we want to make sure we get this in place.
Um, yeah, you're, whether, I, I, I don't think it's my call.
I'm not quite sure what you're asking, Maureen. We're gonna put it on the agenda and get it back before the planning board.
No, it's all just whether we need Art present as well.
Oh, oh, do we want Art present for it? I think it really depends on three point five point one.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree. We should move forward with this and then come back to three, five, one.
Yeah, um, I, I would really like to see it actually instead of in written form, is more outlined in a process. Uh, because when we reviewed, um, some of the subdivisions with more intense grading. It was the overall composition of the whole with the road, the road shape did all the grades and everything. And then when the houses come in, that shifts that grade. And I am unclear still on. And Beth, I may need you to explain a little bit more on why you would not bring that back through subdivision. And you, because it's all one intricate. Analysis of all, as it, one big site, right? The road with all the individual lots, but you're looking at as one big. And then if you're going to go build a house and you have to, you have to do grading around those houses to get. Um, especially when it's really steep to address runoff alone off around the property. Why that grading now shifting to address the relocation would not be picked up as part of a review of the full thing of the subdivision. The impact of a subdivision.
Again, my understanding has always been and, and Art, to jump in if what I'm saying isn't correct. But that subdivision control just covers build out of the roadway and the creation of a lots, meaning the layout of the lots. So anything that happens within the lots themselves in terms of grading, house construction, impervious area, drainage, anything like that. Is governed by the building code and the zoning bylaw.
That, that's correct. That's correct unless drainage on the lots affects drainage on the roads. That's right.
Yeah, so the drainage though, for example, of the one we were just talking about. When that road was created, the drainage of those lots was important to address the drainage of the, that road. To address the drainage of the, that road. It wasn't just the road. We were, we had to deal with a lot of drainage in the system.
Right. But like for the example, for the, um, for the lot at the corner of Abbey Road and, um, Highland Avenue, they weren't. May have been changing the slope slightly, but they weren't changing the drainage patterns. Of where drainage, of where water was running off. So they weren't like regrading the whole lot. So. All of it ran to Highland Ave or all of it used to run to Abbey Road or something like that. Right? So. In that respect, it, it didn't. The only thing that they had to add a small infiltration system to. Accept additional rooftop runoff because they increased the footprint of the house a little bit more than what was shown on the subdivision plan. But in terms of overall drainage patterns, that didn't change.
And so the check and balance behind the scenes for that after the subdivisions reviewed is, is sitting with engineering. And is there a place where it writes out that you are checking for that?
No, I mean, that.
You know, I know you know what you're doing and you do it automatically, but if you were to ever leave or anything were to change. Where is it say that this is being done to confirm that?
So again, in most cases. The drainage for the house lots will not be integrated with the drainage for the roadway, the way that Abbey Road was done. So. Abbey Road's not a great example of what typically happens.
So if it's not a great example, can we mandate that the drainage be uncoupled? Why did we do, why did we, why did we go forward with the current plan? Regardless of where.
There's nothing to say that it can't be done this way. I think, you know, our preference certainly is that it not be done this way, but the applicant felt like there wasn't space in the right of way to construct the systems. Which is why he needed to put them on private property and then he just connected the house. Some portion of the house rooftop runoff into those.
Right. Now I'm just trying to get to. Was, was it possible to do it where the two systems were uncoupled?
I mean, anything's possible from an engineering sense. Would it have cost more money, been more difficult to do? Possibly, you know?
Well, so let me, let me choose a better word. Is it probable that you could uncouple them based on the? What I'm trying to get is, is we seem to have a particular subdivision which had a. Too many things going on at once. At least from our, the planning board's understanding of what was part of the subdivision and what wasn't. Because the, the drainage on the lots was hooked into the drain. You know, I wasn't aware of all these, the nuances. So. And if the engineering department feels that it's preferable to have them uncoupled. Can we simply state they need to be uncoupled unless there is compelling. Evidence or arguments that they must be coupled. And that way we don't have to, there is no. It's a much cleaner separation as to when, for instance, the ZBA comes in to look at lot, changes in, in grading.
Sure. I mean, I don't see any reason that you couldn't put a provision like that in the regulations. Yep.
Okay.
Something more to ask for her, um, help with, um, from Art. I agree with that, um, concern. Or I share that concern.
Yeah. And, and maybe this gets us away with the, you know, buying a lot, changing the grading, buying a lot, changing the grading, and I was sticking within the six percent.
So it doesn't actually, that, that provision wouldn't have anything to do with the grading. Right? That would just have to do with where rooftop runoff was directed. From the project. It wouldn't have anything to do with how they regrade or.
Right, right. Then we need to, we need to come up with something which talks about the time period over which. Uh, you have to take into account previous grading.
Yeah. So I mean, you know, the, the, so Abbey Road's a good, a good example of when they built the roadway, they had to regrade. Large portions of the site in general, right? So. Um, it, when you're, when you. Look at the zoning by law and you have that six percent slope change that triggers. Special permit or site plan review, I'm not sure. Is that from? In this case, should those, when a subdivision was approved, should those have, so that those lots then have gone to the ZBA at that point? Or is it the point where the building permit is acquired, which is there's some interim. Grade between when the subdivision road is built and the houses are built. Like what's the, what's the existing condition that you're measuring that six percent grade from that, I think is the question.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good point. And so. If a substantial portion of a lot has to be regraded to handle the grade in the road. Um. That's something I don't think we've contemplated. In a sense, we've always treating the lots as detached from the road in a sense. In terms of their grading. Um, I think that certainly. That's something that needs to go before, I think that it has to go before the ZBA. If they are going to substantially alter the grade of a lot, just to make sure it's, the, the road is properly graded.
So, so Diab, that would argue in favor of the, of the provision, leaving aside the specific wording maybe.
Oh, I agree.
Of the kind of provision I drafted here.
I agree. Yes. I, I do, I really, I'm just wondering if the provision of, of what you've drafted is. Is, is it, can it encompass more? Are there other things about grading in the subdivision that we could? You know, we could clean up a few more edge cases.
Well.
Corner cases, yeah.
Well, let, let me. So two points. One is what you said before, you could, that you could have another provision or this one could also say. That. The six percent is measured for the, for purposes of six percent, it's all grading done within. Twenty-four months. Um. You know, that, that is the grading done as part of the subdivision, the road construction. And then the grading done for house construction. The, the, what we said before, the four percent and then another four percent example. You could try to address that with the type, kind of time period that you suggested.
Right.
The, the other thing which we haven't talked about and which every, I think we're all sharing the same assumption. Technically. The site plan provision would apply to the road and not just the lot. But clearly that is what you are squarely reviewing in your subdivision approval process. So I don't think anybody intended that the ZBA would get involved, would have another look at the road grading. But, um, but the, the bylaw does, doesn't distinguish that. It just says any, anybody who's grading. So. I think we may want to just let that, let that issue alone, but just be aware that it's out there.
So I, I think on your first point, the, the issue I think we'll run into is that, um. It's unlikely that a subdivision developer will have the final grades for a lot during the subdivision process. I mean, we may have some cases where a subdivision developer actually constructs the houses. But as we've seen with Abbey Road and many other subdivisions around town. There's often one developer who builds the road, maybe builds out one or two of the lots and then sells other lots. So.
Yep.
We end up having them having to go, if they. If then they, if so, say they went through the site plan review process for a grade change over six percent on the lot during the subdivision process. And then somebody comes in with a building permit that changes it slightly from whatever it was approved by the. Um, ZBA or changes it massively from whatever was approved by the ZBA. Did they, then have to go back and get a modification to that? Existing permit?
I, I think they should. And I, I think that we could, we, um, because we really want to look at the change in grade from. What you could call the, you know, the. Medium term. Some time average grade on the land. So for instance, if someone buys a subdivision. Puts in a road, doesn't grade the lots and. Then the next person has to worry about regrading it and they should get hit. It should all be relative to some original sense of what the land looks like. And so, you know. I think that. If the developer grades it. And then sells the lot. Then the next person who attempts to regrade it. Has to do it relative to the original condition before the developer graded the lot. And so in that sense, a time period may not be appropriate. If that lot sits there for, I don't know, three years instead of two years. Um, we still want them to grade relative to the original. Grade on, or original geography, or topography rather of the lot.
So that, that gets tricky, right? Because we could have a project like the Greek streets where that those lots sat there for thirty or forty years. And then we're, you know, going back to a plan from nineteen sixty as the existing condition. So.
So I think there, yeah, a combination of time. So for instance, you know, we certainly don't want people to just wait the barest amount of time. Until it runs, we're, you know, we don't want to play whack a mole with developers trying to find holes in our reg, in our regs. But we do want them to be reasonable. And some combination of those two concepts, I think we could work on.
Yeah, there has to be some time limit and right, just what Beth was saying, you can't just have this open or just open ended.
Right.
Yeah, I wouldn't do that.
I, I think Art maybe could help us by coming, returning on this.
Hmm.
Okay. So we have some things we need to work out. Uh, but just so everyone, um, on the call knows, we are currently waiting for the VHB consultant to join us. Just as an update, I know there's a handful of people waiting. To hear, um, from regarding that. That was supposed to be at eight o'clock, but. Um, Brian, did you have any update?
Yeah. So I'm feverishly emailing back and forth with Zeke, uh, NIM, the chair of the Conservation Commission. And he's also trying to run a meeting of twenty-five people and they're. Um, he says, um, unable to do that right now. They're right now stuck on the Lake Street Bridge NOI. And I then said, why don't we try to get the VHB consultant in and we'll see if that happens. He has, um, Zeke has the Zoom information for our meeting. So I asked him. Uh, so I think it makes the most sense, um. To, uh, at least, uh, start talking about, um. Six fifty-four Main Street as it relates to the flooding. Uh, it's possible the applicant could start. I don't, I don't know how else to do because we can't technically open up the hearing. Related to that, but we can talk about, um, about, uh, flood mitigation. Uh, um, sorry, um, uh, yeah, well. Um, stormwater and flooding infrastructure. So I have not heard back whether or not the VHB consultant can actually join, um, at the time. We do have our, um, traffic consultant joining any minute now. Um, but that's again for eight thirty. So, uh, as, at the moment, we're either waiting for the VHB consultant to come, but it's possible that he won't and we won't know that for several minutes.
Okay, that's disappointing. Let's go back to subdivision. While we, uh, we have the, a few minutes here. So let's get a plan for going forward. The first part that was proposed by Art where, uh, we feel pretty confident with. We'll put it on our agenda for a hearing and, um, do a formal hearing process and give opportunity for the public to give feedback on it. For the other section six, which is down below, um, that Art is recommending. I, I would like to go back to the drawing board on it, but what I would really like to see is a separation of responsibilities. And to keep, and to actually keep the, uh, ZBA out until the actual construction of those houses are, the permits for that is pulled. So I would like to see it, um, more clearly defined. And if we need to separate it out. The drainage patterns from the road versus the drainage pattern, patterns for the construction of the houses, that it'd be more clearly laid out in the subdivision rules and regs. And Diab, did you have other things that you wanted as well?
Oh, yeah. Am I, is my mic on?
Yes, you are on.
Okay, great. Cause I've lost my Zoom window. Um, I, I am a little concerned about if you're worried about grade changes that are taking place. Prior to. How lot of building of structures. Then, and they do exceed six percent and they have to do with road construction. Then we need to be able to review those. Otherwise I don't see how we can control what happens to the rest of the lot. If the ZBA comes in only when they're pulling permits to build, to build houses. That may be long after the grade has changed.
Yeah. So Diab, I think we have to go back to town meeting with a zoning amendment to address the slope change and that it only, it does not relate to subdivision.
Yeah, I think we just, we need to, I, I don't know what, I don't see a. I do not see a comprehensive solution to this question yet. Or to the whole, the whole idea of grades and who weighs in at which point. So I agree, there should be some sort of delineation as to whose responsibility it is. I just, I had, I don't see a clear path to that. Right? Yeah.
So if I may, the, the board needs to decide. Wh- whether you think, um, the ZBA should look at the grade of a lot in a subdivision. If the, if this board is looking only at the road. Uh, and when you think the ZBA should do that. Heather is saying the ZBA should get involved only at the building permit stage, which is certainly. You know, one way to do it. And Diab is saying they should be involved at the subdivision stage as I, as I hear him. Uh, so I'm happy to talk with you further or just take my direction from you on what you want. And I'll redraft this.
Well, I'll jump, the way Heather described it's more of what I would hope to see.
So that, that will require an amend, I mean, not require, I mean, it, that should, should have an amendment to the zoning by law then.
No, I don't think we have to. I think let's, we own the, as you know, the subdivision regs. Let's get that done.
I, I'm still not sure what we do if, if, I, we don't have anything in the subdivision regs. Which says what the limits on grades are. And I, I'm, I'm concerned. I mean, that's where I'm worried about. If, if someone comes in and regrades the land well beyond the six percent. Then we've lost something.
Diab, are you talking about the, the roadway or the adjacent land?
The adjacent lots, not the roadway.
Yep.
And so we, we gave Abbey Road. It's not a variance because that's a technical term. We gave them leeway to put in a road which was steeper than we normally would have. And becau- and in order to perhaps make up for the fact, or to reduce the amount of grading they'd need to do on the remaining land. I don't recall all of the details. But certainly if we force them to a particular grade that. And they have to regrade everything by a large amount in order to make that feasible. Then that indicates that there's something really wrong. About the development on that land and it perhaps shouldn't go forward. But we don't have anything in the subdivision regs which say that, yeah, if you need to regrade the lots by more than six percent in order to accommodate a road. Then there's something really wrong with your design. We don't have anything like that.
So there's multiple issues going on, Diab, that I see. You're bringing up that we need to have more strict, um. Restrictions on grading in the subdivision rules and regs.
Yeah.
The other of who, who manages and reviews that and at what stage? From my perspective, oh my gosh, sorry, you can hear that. Um, from my perspective. The, the subdivision. All the components that make, create a subdivision under the, from the state law come to the planning board. And so we should maintain, we should keep that. And then when we're done with the subdivision sign off, they go to build their lots. From there with construction, it goes to the ZBA. I would like that explicitly laid out. But on what you're also asking for, in addition to that, is that we look at. Um, at adding language into the subdivision. Rules and regs about grading. Um, that's regarding specifically to subdivisions. So it's two points and I don't know where to begin with, uh, the, where we'll be looking. The six percent is more appropriate for when you're looking at, you know, retaining walls on site construction with new housing or, you know, some changes for pools or. Um, different things like that, that we've run into very recently, but it's not that six percent doesn't automatically go into when you're building a road. On that, that changes very dramatically. So. Um, that would take some research on our part to take part of that. Would you be okay at this time going forward with looking at really defining? The new section that are the three point five point one. So that it's a clear delineation of who's responsible for the grading at what stage for the reviews. And then adjusting the site plan. So it's explicitly clear in the zoning that, um, the subdivision reviews are under the. Uh, the, the permit. The, the authority of the planning board.
Art, what, what's the legal authority under the subdivision control law of the planning board to review? Or, and, and not just review, but, but to require certain grades on the lots that are.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna mention, I was gonna say that at some point. I'd have to look. I'm not, I mean, typically they don't as Beth, was that Beth talking?
Yes, yep.
Um, yeah, typically they don't, as you said, and. You know, subdivision control, it's just, it's just the layout. I mean, the answer I think would be for this board not to allow roads that are steeper than usual. Not to grant a waiver of the maximum, uh, grade of the road. If it, if, if you know that's going to require regrading of the lots to accommodate that.
Well, I think you could, you could build a road that meets the requirements and still require regrading of the lots.
Well, but I'd have to look at the authority to, I'd have to look at the authority over the grades of the lots in the subdivision process because that's typically. Typically not, not addressed. because that's typically, typically not, not addressed.
Yeah, I mean, it, it seems that, you know, we have, we have relied upon the cost of removing, you know, rocks and soil in order to say, well, no one in their right mind is going to level this lot in order to get a road in. But as we know, technology advances and costs, well, I don't know what costs do, but certainly a lot of stuff has happened in pre, in recent years, no one would have thought earlier. So at some point, a developer may just go in and flatten the lot and say, okay, it's flattened now. I've had to take, you know, 20% off the grade and there's nothing you can do about it because I did all this under subdivision so I could put my road in.
Yep.
And then.
It's not so much the cost have come down, it's land value has gone up.
Yeah, well, whatever, whatever the, the, you know, the, the balance sheet says for the developer, they'll say, fine, I'll just level it. This nice hilly area used to had, which was beautiful, is now flat as a pancake and there's nothing you can do about it. And that's what I'm really concerned about.
So you want the ZBA to at least have site plan review authority? I mean, maybe you want the ZBA to have special permit authority over that, that's a different question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what land use law says you can do about things like that. So it's, you know, the only thing is I see is that there is, the developer has sort of a special ability to go in because they're putting a road in, in a subdivision. A normal developer who only buys a single existing lot doesn't have that freedom to say, well, we can do a lot more to this land because we have to put a road in. And so, you know, so that's, it's just a big hole, I see. That's my main concern.
So it sounds like we need to do some research, just exactly how to deal with this. All right, I think we have a plan. Does everyone understand our plan to go forward? We're going to research for 3.5.1 dealing with, in terms of grading and what, what the options are? And we'll continue with the other section.
Yeah.
Other members of the planning board?
When you say we, I assume you mean Art will help us out.
Yeah, 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 we as in, you are.
Yeah, that's why I, I need to understand better what scenarios you, you see and what you want, what you want to happen in each of them. But certainly I'll work with you and with Brian to do this.
So I'm, I'm volunteering myself to meet with you and Brian if we just, so we don't need to come back to the full planning board and discuss these things, at least from my point of view.
I'm fine with that. Other members of the board?
Fine.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm happy to participate as well in the conversation.
Yeah, I think you should definitely be there, Brian.
You beat me, you beat me to it, Beth. I was gonna, I was gonna nominate you, but I, I think the only thing I wanted to, to, to mention, I guess, about this was that the reason why the board at the time decided to use the 6% rule was two reasons. One had to do with the size of retaining walls that would be required for moving a decent amount of dirt. So the size of retaining walls and the other was related to that was, was drainage, so, you know, flooding. So, or people's basements being flooded more, more particularly. So that, that was the main reason and I, I want this to be kind of in relation to site, site plan review. This is obviously very much related to that and I think that those things are, are, I want to get this from the planning board that those, that was the reason why we decided to do that 6% rule for those two reasons. I want to kind of get confirmation because that will allow Art to attack the problem in the best way. So before we leave in a minute, I just was hoping that, that, I just want to get confirmation from the board that those were the two things. One, yeah, that, yeah.
I think I agree with everything you just said, Brian.
Okay, yeah, it's size of walls and my basement getting flooded. That was what I, that was, that was the rambling for 40 seconds.
Really important and they were something we wanted to address, so yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And, and just knowing that, that as I think it was, Heather, you pointed out, that was appropriate for grades against, when we're just dealing with two separate lots, not a giant subdivision which may have different grade requirements. So, yeah.
All right, well, it's 8:30 and so we are currently on schedule. So we're going to end the conversation on the subdivision rules and regs and move onward.
Heather, excuse me, so then it sounds like you don't need me later this evening?
Nope, I think we're all set and we'll be in a meeting later on with Diab. And then we'll do a, we'll do another meeting with the planning board when a decision and some draft recommendations are made by.
Okay.
I think we ought to just wrap up though on that first part, schedule a hearing is so important to not let it hang. I just.
Well, it can't be the night, so. It can't be the night, so it'd be at our following meeting.
23rd.
Which would be February 23rd.
Right, it's, it's fine, these two can be separated, let's do it.
Yeah, but we don't have to set the specific time now, right?
Correct, but you and Brian.
You just wanted me to announce, oh, okay, I get it. You just wanted me to announce when we would be bringing it back to, on our agenda for the, when the hearing.
Getting us to getting this done.
Yep, so the 23rd and the exact time would be dependent upon our schedule when I get a better idea of what we'll have on our agenda.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay.
And maybe at that same meeting, Art, if you can attend that meeting, the hearing, that would be a good time also to give an update from Brian and you about how to proceed to close out the open subdivisions. That'll give you about a month to review them and come up with a strategy on how to get them all closed. Because the rest, from our perspective, the rest is really legal.
Okay, I'm just looking at my calendar and that's fine.
Okay. All right, so let's move on to our hearing that we have for 654 Main Street. It is, I tried to open at 8:30, but it's 8:32. I'm going to.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Art, for your time. Have a good one.
Thank you.
So I'd like to welcome everyone to the public hearing of the Winchester Planning Board. Typically in this situation, you would be signing in, but since you are, we are in the Zoom world right now with government, your sign in is the name that you used when you signed into Zoom. And so we'll be using that as record, our public record for who attended. Just so everyone is reminded, I always do at the beginning of the meeting, but for the hearings as well, the meeting is being recorded for the benefit of those who have come just for the hearing. The hearing is available on Wind Cam and you can also get it on Wind Cam's website. It's currently, it gets broadcasted on their station as well. The purpose of the public hearing is to continue, is a continuation of the review of 654 Main Street application for permit. We are currently in the procedures of the special per, special permit site plan review and variances of public hearing procedures. We are currently in the review, the review of the board deliberate, the board deliberations, my apologies. We are currently in the board discussion around number eight and also the consultants reviews. The applicant is with us today and they wanted to speak with us a little bit regarding an update on that. And as everyone who did participate in the last hearing and that was continued to today, the meeting on the ninth will be a substantial meeting on 654 Main Street, which we will take in a lot of, it'll be an opportunity for the public to ask questions of the applicant along with the planning board. And they also receive answers along with the planning board, have their Q and As as well, along with the board deliberations. So we'll be going through 12, 13, and potentially 14 a part of our procedures. Going from there, Brian, did you have any comments before we begin?
Just a couple of quick ones. So the idea here is that we're going to try to go through some things a little quickly. We're trying to get, going to get through two things tonight in general. Going to get a recap and changes by architect Salukian, quick, you know, five, five minutes. And we'll get a, another five, 10 minutes from Dennis and then we'll have a, a design conversation about that. And then Tool Design, Erica Gritaboni from Tool is here this evening to discuss the traffic peer review. So it's pretty much going to be between design and traffic and parking. So in C-FIT in terms of time, we're trying to get out of here at 9:30 with this agenda item. So I'll just turn it on over to Ted and we'll go from there.
Excellent, Brian, thank you. Brian, may I share the screen?
Yep, sure, hold on.
All right, I, I think I'm still disabled with my connection.
Should try now.
Oh, now it is, all right, let me try that. All right. Okay, can everyone see a blue screen that says January 26?
Go right ahead, yep.
All right, excellent. All right, well, thank you, everyone. I, as Brian and Heather had pointed out, we're going to try to do a very brief overview. I just would like to point out that this package that we're providing is an update to our CBD special permit and site plan review application that was originally submitted on September 4th. And this includes revisions to Appendix D Plan Set, which includes presentation perspectives as well as the 24 by 36 full-scale architectural plans and elevations. In our submission that we provided at last Friday, it also includes a letter that highlights the primary changes since our initial submission that occurred through conversations with the planning review board and of course, with our design, their design review consultant, Dennis Carlon. So we're going to try to run real quickly through this. I hope everyone has an opportunity to just have a brief overview and I'm certain people are familiar with the project. But we're going to go through this in a manner that helps reinforce our urban design and architectural recommendations. Just for the point of departure here, the project is unchanged and it's still 36 dwelling units, two commercial spaces and of course, the restoration of Vine Street. It's, I'm going to show this slide really is just the primary high-level overview that the project is really guided through the town's planning objectives and the zoning regulations, the design guidelines. And specifically on our focus as the site, as a gateway or entrance into the CBD and cultural district. And I think throughout this process, we really look to increase the opportunity to provide affordable and market rate housing to strengthen the pedestrian experience with connections to existing and new retail as well as interconnecting diverse and important historical resources within the fabric of the residential and mercantile context. It's centered around four pieces, a mercantile building facing Main Street, 63 Vine Street restoration, the courtyard and the residential building along Elmwood. Our process has been, excuse me, my office is next to a fire station. Sorry for that disruption. But really our process has been centered around really building a dialogue between not only the residential neighborhood with its formal language, but also the Main Street language to really hopefully create a transformative project that can connect, make connections to Main Street as well as to the residential fabric. It's really been around, a lot of concentration in our conversations has been around the ground floor. The experience with the pedestrian way along Main Street, reinforcing the street trees and creating good transparent connections to retail spaces. And this diagram, I think, helps to convey the layering that occurs at that pedestrian scale, the opening of the entrance into the retail spaces and the setback to widen that pedestrian experience and really create stronger connections up Main Street with trees and plantings as well as the layering vertically with scaled balconies and openings along the edges. And this is just a rendering view, trying to get more tangible with the materiality of the authentic red brick that we see throughout Winchester, the different tones between the Elmwood and the Main Street building, the transparency that occurs at the ground level, the street trees, the plantings and the pedestrian experience as a whole. And I'm just going to cruise very quickly through the virtual walk-around that we've shown in the past that begins to show you the entrance into the parking and the two different buildings, the details between the bricks and the balcony and the dormers that we've worked on a little bit more with the drip edges and the detailing of the metal as well as the pedestrian experience and the entrance into the residential foyer. And as we move back in a way, I think some particular time has been on the cornice where we looked at the brick detailing, the detailing around the headers of the windows with soldier coursing as well as granite wraps at the column bases to really help bring some even scale and proportion to the connections at those areas. And I think this will obviously progress through the construction documents, but it begins to depict some of the, we feel some of the joy of the detail that will occur between the brick and the different components. Particular concentration has been at that retail level with the guidelines centered around the canopies, the signage lighting, the opportunity for STEM signing that will create some shadow, the planting, so it will help again green that lower level. So as you walk down, I think, Main Street, we begin to create a canopy and an experience of enclosure that really, I believe, be quite pleasurable for the pedestrian level as you move back and up and around the building. Additionally, another big area of focus has been the transition between Main Street and Vine Street and the attention of how we added gable roofs and dormers and more residential scaled windows that created a better sort of transition to the restoration at 63 Vine Street. The dormers and the flush balconies and the stepping of the massing to really help create, we believe, a, a strong connection to the historic gable roof forms that exist along Elmwood. So I think in conclusion, it's really been a great team effort. Been really proud of our, our group of people, not just in the office, our developer, client, of course, and the coordination with Brian and Dennis. And with that, I'm just going to turn it back to Brian. Thank you.
I'm just going to hand it right on over to Dennis for five minutes.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. I know that you've seen my written comments, which tried to address all the issues brought up as well as some solutions, other areas that will still be refined. In a nutshell, on neighborhood concerns about the size and density, this comes right out of the zoning and a response by the architect and developer to mitigate the character of the apartment building closest to the smaller structures. And to be honest, my initial studies were a five-story structure on, on Main Street and a three-story structure behind, and it did not save the wooden house. Those priorities and a priority to keep Main Street at four really dictated the design as we see it here. I've often told, although I didn't know Ted would leave this rendering up this view, but it seems to me this view does tell a story and I realize some people might view it as encroaching on the smaller residential wood frame buildings, but I see it as a handsome response to the surrounding area. The new Main Street, where we're not going to have one-story structures and many gas stations in the next 20 years, I believe. And more like the character of a true downtown building in the 21st century. Now, this building does not, although its principles are traditional, its architectural expression tries to make a modern building with the scale and warmth and character of a traditional building. The primary elements in my mind are the storefront treatment is very traditional in concept, but in a modern interpretation, these windows on the upper floors are not like most typical. are not like most typical buildings nowadays that are pretty much flush with the facade. They're recessed up to eight inches. The cornice is stronger than it was much than earlier, and yet, it's not traditional, but it has a traditional scale and richness at the top. As we turn the corner, I look at the housing on Elmwood Avenue, and I think traditional English town housing. And I mean that as a compliment as well. And then, turning the corner, I know Ted's gonna have to go through all his slides, the wooden, the historic wooden house, I think, has been treated in a very loving way, given the zoning, given the existing neighborhood. And my only last comment is the one thing that I would like to talk to the town about is having a curb bump out at the corner of Elmwood Avenue and Main Streets that leads to, you can see the crosswalk there, that makes the street crossing a little saner. And actually, legally, in New England and Massachusetts, you cannot park in the 20 feet from the corner anyway. So, you would not lose parking, but it would make the crossing safer. On our side in this rendering, there is parking in the garage, in the gas station lot. So, it's not like it's going into a curb cut. So, in short, this has been a very interesting, in the best sense, refinement of a building. We've had probably 20 discussions, meetings, and each time, there's been a better understanding of what's going on and a refinement of the building. I heartily recommend this design, given the scale, given the zoning, given the character. Now, one of the guidelines, the standards that I wrote, that it should respect its surroundings. Well, part of the surroundings is the Main Street plan. And this very much does that and tries in all its ways to break down the scale as it meets Vine Street. I think it's an excellent project, and you know, every architect would do things a little differently. And I might, but I greatly respect this design, and I think Winchester is lucky to have this building. I conclude my comments there, but I certainly, Ted and I will take questions if you wish.
So, then I'll swing back to Heather.
Thank you, Dennis, for that. Members of the Planning Board, did you have any questions or answered questions at this time or comments?
I'm good.
The one thing, I know Cheryl had raised the question, and I guess when we go around in a circle, we don't always circle back, or whatever. Well, that's phrased correctly, we don't always circle back. But that question about that corner that at Main and Vine, it really is, I wanna support Cheryl, and we didn't have a chance to get back to that, but I just think, I'm looking at it right now, it just looks like something got chewed out of it. Doesn't have the weight that you want on the corner.
Well, I wrote about that, and that's one of the areas that we'll continue to look at. But the more I studied it, I mean Ted is very strong.
Well, let's go back to it so we can all look at it. Well, you don't see the cutout from this angle. Thanks, Brian, this isn't it, though. I think where we started a minute ago.
Ted's driving here.
Oh, just, if you could just explain which slide you'd like me to push it back to?
Well, where it was before, when you're further toward the rotary on Main Street, looking back so that you can see the, it's a negative space, that's what it is. Well, that sort of gets it, but from the other angle, you can see that it's a big, oh, there's the big negative spaces.
Looking north, Ted.
Okay. That?
There, yeah, well, okay. Or further, a little further along north on Main Street.
I don't know if I have another slide farther back.
Not further toward the rotary, further north. One, a little closer.
I thought you did.
There it is. Well, that'll do it. Whoa, go back. There, oh, boy.
It was the fully rendered one.
Oh, okay, that's, there you go.
And Cheryl, maybe, Heather, if I may ask Cheryl, there it is. Yeah, that's a good way to describe it, multi-color rendered. Cheryl, was, could you speak again, if that's okay with Heather? I think we need a conversation to get some discussion, to figure out what we're all, what we all think about that. But Cheryl, your comments again?
It's hard to go back to where we were in that conversation, but I would say that if I'm building on what Dennis was saying and the work that's been done to the cornice, I think that the balcony, in its size and the way that it, the roads, the corner, in terms of the expression of the cornice, I think it weakens the, it weakens the brick facade and the cornice itself. My suggestion at the time, and I know that you've also made some real progress on transitioning on Vine from, you know, the Main Street facade to a real elegant, you know, how you've treated the residential side of the project. That's gone really well. My suggestion was that the balcony for that larger unit, which is, you know, a wonderful layout and unit, would be to face it towards the west and get it into that location of transition between residential and the commercial facade. But that's, it's shown here on the other side, right near the entrance, the way that there's a natural carving away, but not, you know, completely undermining the cornice or the weight of the cornice here on the left-hand side. So, that's, that's pretty much the best I can do to think of it as, you know, something that's a minor weakness. It's just, it's what I'm seeing in the materiality of this really wonderful Main Street, you know, commercial building. I think you've done a great job. And I do like the carving away at the public areas with the retail, because I think it draws you in. But I think on the private residential portions of the building above, it's the smaller balconies or balconies that face in that larger unit to the west would be, they'd face out towards the residential part of Winchester up the hill. I think that would be a really nice amenity for those units.
Well, if I can respond before Ted, we did talk a lot about this, and I had it listed under Further Refinement Focus. The process goes on. Granted, we need to call out what needs work. But the more I talked to Ted and the whole team and Brian, I realized there was something good about this. And what that is, is it's less mass at the less dense street. So, there is more carving into the facade as you turn the corner. And if Ted, if you could sort of go to a view that shows that corner. And then, the facade is set back, and then the facade, I think, when you see the house, keep going. Think, when you look at the house and the facade together, thank you. And, you know, maybe the connection still needs work, but when you... So, this is truly representing what everybody wanted and cutting the roof back. So, the facade is less solid. It's broken down in pieces, and it's less dense. To me, the more I thought about it after our team conversations, that it's actually more sensitive to its setting. I totally get where Cheryl's coming from. And I admit, my initial thoughts on this were similar, but after talking to Ted and thinking about what our goals were on this facade, I'm willing to accept it. Now, if you want us to continue looking at it and report back, we will. I wrote that in my notes as well, that if something is important, we will do that. But it seems to me that this goes a long way to achieving what the Planning Board wanted.
Dennis, I thank you for that comment. I would just wanna add one aspect about the site in the design process has been the challenge of movement around the building. And I, the edges, and helping take away the frontal sort of expression, which I believe by reinforcing those corners to be more solid makes the building feel larger. Also, a real sensitivity to the residential neighborhood by not posing the balconies towards the west. But the building needs to rotate. And I believe the movement between the gables and the corners and how one sees it as an urban statement, as much as a site building, how it points to the north and really becomes that expression of a gateway. And I think that it's important that every building has different nuances that don't necessarily always repeat, that have meaningful connections to its context. For instance, at the ground level here, to the north, to the south, and the way the building has to move. So, I thank Dennis for that point of view. We did talk about it. I feel like it's an important perspective that helps really, I think, soften the corners. So, I would like to still recommend that, but we'll obviously continue to discuss it.
Oh, I think the point here at some, like now, is the Planning Board's supposed to also give feedback, but I don't know where we are in this, because Heather, we also are supposed to be getting feedback from our neighbors and our fellow residents. So...
We're gonna go back to, so this is leading up to the ninth. So, on the ninth, we're going to start with any updates, go through all the consultants' updates and feedback. There's some things.
I'm just puzzled, because it feels like we're going forward with design responses without the full input of the neighbors. But I guess I wanna say that for myself, that I like the word Cheryl used, which is undermined. And for me, as a design component, that that corner just looks undermined, and it's uncomfortable, just as cantilevers are uncomfortable. So, I just, I'm going to say that right now. So, I think it's, I don't know, it seems like Dennis is working with Ted, and everything is moving forward, but I don't know if we're supposed to be giving input or if we're supposed to be waiting to hear from the abutters in the community.
I would certainly like to give my input. Heather, is that an appropriate time to give input now?
Yep.
So, I am going to, I have been very much swayed by the arguments that Dennis and Ted have put forward as to how that opening lightens the structure, especially when you look at it from up on Vine Street. And I didn't really appreciate how much it softens that hard edge when you're in the residential neighborhood looking down towards Main. And I, I am actually a big fan of cantilevers myself, so it's just a personal preference. But I really think that it does make it a little less bulky, and the words was mass, or mass, more massive, less massive, I believe, is what was used. So, I can certainly understand the point of view where you think it undercuts that. And I can also, I do think, however, the benefit of reducing that mass on that corner from the residential area and from coming down from North Main Street, where it actually softens the approach to the building and transitions it towards the, you know, the more mercantile look as you go down, towards downtown. I have, I've been swayed, and I've become to appreciate that point of view. So, I think it, I think it works. I prefer round corners rather than square corners. I guess you can't have a round corner, can you? I prefer rounded rather than square, but that certainly, there's nothing round about this building. So, I think, you know, everything has 90 degrees or something like that around there. So, but that's my opinion. I think, I personally think it can stay.
I have a quick question. I'm very intrigued by the idea that that corner of the building is, participates as the gateway to Main Street. I hadn't heard that before, so I find that really intriguing. But then, it makes me, it begs the question, why isn't the cafe on that corner instead of the other way around? Is there, was there planning associated with where the hardware store would go and where it would not go?
You know, just in some initial planning, it sort of felt that the precedent of its location on that corner was meaningful, and I think it really felt like it worked there traditionally. And we...
Felt the plan, Ted.
Oh, yeah.
Because it does seem as though the retail on that corner of the building isn't, it doesn't really engage that gateway kind of...
Part of it was a way to pull people from the south to the building and also pull people from the north. And I think this building probably, although it being a gateway building, needs to have interaction from both ends of Main Street in order to be really successful. Another piece is a really simple planning component, that the square footage that fells needed just in terms of how the distribution of the space worked. It also worked, I think, better on the north, just in terms of the square footage required and where the entrances had to be. And as you can see, the cafe needs are much smaller. And as you can see, the distribution is reflecting that. So, it was kind of all, I think, all these pieces working together.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's really successful in that the cafe and that larger public space actually signals the entry to the building as a residential building. So, I, because I think the entry on Elmwood is, you know, I think you've greatly improved that since we started. So, you know, but when you said gateway on the other side with the larger balconies, that was, that came to mind. So, I just thought I'd ask. I think it's a really strong design. I think this is, you know, we could talk about that design for a long time, as you know. That's how it evolves. I think, Heather, you were talking about getting input from the public. I think that's, you know, this, these drawings are really provocative. We should...
I'm happy to respond to the note. I'm happy to respond to the notes that were sent me from the public, if you wish. The chair asked me to look at that last time.
So Brian, what what other, I would like to do that if we have time to do that. What other items did you have lined up for the hearing for today?
Yeah, the only thing that we were going to go with, I was going to give a 20 second update of what happened at the select board meeting last night related to this project. And then I was going to turn it over to Erica from Tool to. Present the peer review.
Okay, so Dennis, at the next meeting we have on the ninth, I'm assuming you're attending.
I will try to. I I have to look at my schedule. What 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 hour is that?
We haven't said the time, but it would be, it would be probably eight.
Okay, I'm looking it up now. I will definitely try to be here.
Because I'd like to do it then and then take go into Q and As from the public after that. But I would like to give traffic time as well, so the public can hear from traffic too. So. My whole thought process of the whole. Whole process here is to make sure that the public has all the information, the designs and everything to then comment there on and go. And so all that information is brought into the discussion for the deliberations for the planning board. And I didn't feel it was fair without traffic hasn't provided their feedback for independence. Yet. And so I want to make sure that that all happens before. And we don't close the public discussion, Q and As down before that information is provided.
Madam Chair, I think it would be more fair for the public if they get to present their comments first instead of me. Responding to their written comments and then they come back with their verbal comments. But that is entirely up to you.
Oh, you mean in order of how we're going to do it? Okay.
Yes. At a courtesy to them.
Okay, I'll give it some thought when I organize the for the next meeting, how we organize it. Brian, I would like to go to traffic.
Sure. Okay, Ted, I'm going to.
Okay, I'm going to stop sharing.
Yeah. Yeah. Need a second here. So I'm last night at the select board hearing, at the select board meeting. This, this was shown by the engineer Larry Beal to 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 the select board to review for. Sidewalk with and they approved this plan that shows an eight foot sidewalk. On the north side of Elmwood and a four foot sidewalk on the southern side of Elmwood. They did not take a position on anything related to, since there were no crosswalks on here, they didn't say anything. They did talk about a larger study that they're that they're doing that would want to potentially incorporate. Main Street. This portion of Main Street, there's a downtown study that's going on right now that Tools are part of. This is not part of that study. And the idea is that they would look at further, further looking at potential bump, not just bump outs, but potential. Road diet at this. Along the whole corridor to stop and shop. So it's kind of part of a of a larger study, but they did approve this plan. And I think with that, I was going to hand it on over to to Erica unless anyone had any quick questions about this. Okay, I'm gonna let. I'm going to let Erica introduce herself. I'm going to let her share her screen.
Good evening. I don't think I have the ability to share my screen yet.
Try now.
There it goes. Thank you. One moment. Everyone see my title slide?
Wonderful.
Thank you. Good evening. As Brian mentioned, my name is Erica Guidaboni. I am a transportation engineer at Tool Design Group. I have been doing, doing or reviewing traffic studies for much of my career. And as you know, the the board had asked me to, or Brian asked me to take a look at this. Traffic study that was conducted for six 54 Main Street. So I conducted a peer review. On the traffic impact study that was submitted by Howard Stein Hudson in August of 2020. Really wanted to focus in this peer review on safety, pedestrian access, loading, parking, transportation demand management. It felt contextual that it was important that we looked at it in the, you know, the downtown setting that this is placed. This is a multimodal project. Intended to encourage other modes of transportation. So the focus was not, you know, I did look at the traffic impact assessment as well. But I really wanted to hone in on on the safety and pedestrian access related to this project. I apologize, my slides are not as beautiful as Ted's were. So my memorandum was submitted on January 15th, so just a couple of weeks ago. It contained approximately 15 comments requesting additional information. And also providing recommendations related to mitigation. Since then, I actually spoke with Brian and the proponent yesterday to go over my comments. I've received a draft document of their response to comments actually today. I was able to take a look at that before the meeting. There was a couple of minor items related to loading and delivery zone locations and ensuring that those. Those locations are clear in their plans. But aside from that, the traffic impact study was performed, you know, to industry and local standards. And appropriately does measure the transportation impacts of the project. I wanted to dive in just a little bit more. You know, a lot of the things that we went back and forth about were related to, you know, turning envelopes. And making sure that that sidewalk on Elmwood connected to the one that was already constructed as part of 3640 Elmwood Ave. You know, minor things that I think I'm satisfied with and they're no longer outstanding. But I wanted to dive in quickly about some of the recommendations and how the proponent responded. So I had recommended a vehicle exiting beacons be installed at the site driveway to ensure. You know, pedestrian and bicyclists moving back and forth across the driveway and along the sidewalk. Would have a clear indication of when a vehicle is approaching through the driveway. I had made a recommendation related to, sorry, that so that recommendation was accepted by the proponent to install those beacons. I made a recommendation related to transportation demand management. This is kind of an interesting policy related thing. Where vehicle parking is unbundled from the residential units. And this requires that the spaces be sold separately from the units and not included as part of the cost of payment for a unit. The intention here is that someone that does not want to own a vehicle has the option to not pay for a parking space. Which would be subsidizing a person that is. That is choosing to live without a vehicle. And that was also accepted by the proponent. The provision for an installation or funding to install marking of crosswalks, stop bars, stop signs. At the entrance point and exit points of Vine Street and Elmwood Ave at Main Street. In addition, a one way sign was recommended to be installed at the Main Street end of Elmwood Avenue, which is not there today. That was also accepted by the proponent. And a couple of my recommendations were not accepted as exactly as I had set them forth. So these might be discussion points. The, I requested 36 indoor parking spaces be provided for bicycles associated with the units. And the proponent would like to maintain their 24 spaces. They did mention to me that they would be open to providing additional bicycle parking should demand arise from residents. And then the the last one is a little more of a bigger picture thing. You know, I I went out there, I see what Elmwood Ave looks like. It's it's got some challenges there. It's got, it's missing some curbing. There's a lot of parking happening on. You know, on pseudo sidewalks on one side of the street. Turning radio are challenging. The sign that should be updated. There was discussion about potential two way options there. These are all things that I think do have merit and interest. I also don't feel that that those those ideas should hold up the ability to build this project. It's not their street. But they are building on the street that does not have a lot of volume on it. And they will be adding to that volume. Not an impactful amount, but significant enough that that low volume is going to increase. So my recommendation was that the proponent provide a fair share contribution to the town. Further evaluate some of these improvements. I think it would be a transportation study of the feasibility of what Elmwood Ave could potentially be someday. And that was not accepted by the proponent as well. That that is the end of my official presentation.
Thank you, Erica. Members of the planning board?
Well, hey, Erica, this is Dejarius. Thanks for the for the report. I have a quick question about the public bike parking. I believe, and maybe I'm wrong, they're providing four bike parking spaces on the Vine Street side of the lot. You think that's an appropriate number for the cafe and the businesses or should there? I it's it's hard for me. I'm trying to think about other towns that definitely have public bike parking. Where do you think the responsibility for bike parking for clients of the retail establishments lies?
That's that's a little bit challenging as I'm not totally familiar with the demand levels in downtown in terms of. Available bicycle parking and what's being utilized and, you know, where those kind of demand spots are. I do think. It may not be too challenging to keep an eye on this sort of thing. And if you start starting to see that it's filling up, you could add another rack. I don't know if the proponent is is interested in providing a little bit more than what they've done. I believe what is there in their proposal is does meet zoning requirements. But it's likely the minimum would have to check. I'm not certain what the demand is there. I know that, you know, the town is looking to increase that activity level. I know it's part of the. The road book that was done by T-TAC that we're looking at Main Street. So there is, I do think that that demand is going to increase. I'm just not. Completely familiar with where that would land.
Okay, thank you.
How would we calculate what their fair share contribution would be if we wanted to do a study on Elmwood?
So as a, as the, I guess, looking at the traffic study, that's kind of where my mind goes. So activity levels on Elmwood Ave today, the, sorry, the no build, which is what kind of projecting to the future. Volumes without the project. The study had 16 vehicles in the morning peak hour and 16 in the PM peak hour. And then with the study, they're increasing the demand on Elmwood Ave in the morning by 16. So they're increasing it by 100%. And then the evening it was 32%. So I would do some sort of, you know, it's essentially. In the morning, it's about 50% of the vehicles on Elmwood Ave would be associated with this project. And it'd be about 66% of that in the evening. So. Somewhere in that sweet spot, I think, is the appropriate place to fall in terms of traffic demand on Elmwood Avenue.
Erica, there has been some concerns regarding deliveries. And whatnot and how it has congestion on in the area. And the town of Winchester has not implemented any delivery guidelines to help mitigate. That backing up the traffic. And with one being a potential hardware store, which, you know, should should be getting deliveries and stuff, is there? Any recommendations you have for the town to do for deliveries to help mitigate? That backing up traffic when taking spots and the impact of that?
Yeah, so that's kind of a, that's a discussion that I'm having through these reports with Howard Stein Hudson. Something that came up is. I think we should be design designating on-street loading zones. And I think that will be critical and and then coordinating with. With that tenant to ensure that the scheduling for loading and delivery is happening during off-peak hours. So I think. Between the loading zones having particular hours that you're affording and a space that is dedicated for those commercial tenants to utilize. I think it's kind of where that's going to end up falling. I would say that the loading zones on Elmwood Ave now, I don't believe that those, I think the ones on the south side were going to be maintained. Those don't seem like official loading zones. They seem like potentially a business there to sort of put a sign on the side of the business. So I think something more official would be would be ideal here.
Thank you. So you'll, you said you're gonna, you're still working on that with?
Yep, I got a draft report of response to comments back today, so I will be responding to that. But it's. Yeah, essentially, we're getting to a place where we need to come up with what that recommendation would be.
Okay. And just so I'm clear, what of documents are you still missing? I know in the report we saw last week that was emailed to us. There's a fair share of things that you're looking for document wise. Did you receive all those documents or?
Yep, I had, I had all my, I had all the documents. It was just some additional questions when I dug into the study. Not everything was the way, you know, kind of broken out the way that I wanted to see it. So the proponent did provide some additional figures and broke things out kind of the way that I was looking to digest it. And I've done that today. So I'll be responding to his response to comments. So I do have everything I need, yes.
Thank you. And then I know, Brian, you had mentioned the affordable units that will be in here. There was. In your, in your comments, it wasn't to the, it was to the planning board, but we have not discussed it at all. The comments about the parking and detaching it for those affordable units and how to do that. Do we have any more information on that?
No, this is more kind of brought up that I kind of, as I said, if you want to go, Erica, to the slide before.
This one?
Yeah, where it says vehicle parking can be unbundled from the residential units, requiring the parking onsite to be rented or sold separately from the unit. Like I said, I didn't think this on its face that there's there's any issues with that. I mean, I like the idea, but I think there are some ramifications. For the affordable unit in terms of how, and I I just don't know how that would be figured out. And I think the idea is that. You know, it's really, it's really a condition to be, you know, approved by the housing partnership board, something, something like that. That will not, would probably not be worked out at, you know, pre-permit. But it's just more of a, it was kind of a heads up that like, I think there's a. You know, there, it's unclear how we would. How we would treat the the vehicle parking spaces with the affordable units in terms of how how it gets unbundled, how much it gets sold. Well, you know, there's just, there's some details there that need to get worked out.
And why, why would you? If you had parking onsite and you had condos, you're saying that those would be rented. Are you saying that the property owner would rent their? Spot out? I mean, because you're saying they're unbundled. Who would be responsible for maintaining and keeping up with who's renting those to meet the condo docs and the regs, the rules and regs, the condo association?
Yeah, that would be the condo association and the property owner, yep.
So in some ways, is that more expensive versus if you kept them bundled to the units, but you gave them the option to rent or sell them?
And then. Yeah, I think. Yeah, my vision would be that the the vehicle parking would kind of be offered up to the unit or, you know, to let. You know, you have the listing for the condo, for instance, and parking is available for an additional cost. And the, yeah, the idea here is that it's discouraging. Some some people might choose not to drive. Or maybe they'll choose to have one vehicle instead of two, you know, understanding that the parking has a value instead of just, oh, I have a spot, I might as well use it.
So then down the road, when you, if you did the unbundling and you sold all the car spots. And you go to sell your your condo and you don't have a unit, then that will just put that car on the street versus keeping it in contained inside the development. So right now it would be, it makes sense, but down the road with more turnovers and sales of those units. Then those units now no longer have parking. So then they're going to move and just start parking on the street or. Use the janks a lot in snowstorms and stuff like that. Because right now we don't have on-street overnight parking. So it makes the the sale of those units less enticing because there's no place for them to put the cars at this point.
Well, there are additional, there are extra spots for the number of units versus the number of parking spaces is actually. Not just one, it's a little over one. That is, that is possible, what you're saying. I think it's also possible that, you know, you'll have people that are choosing to not. Own vehicles and use car share and things like that to get around and utilize the train station, which is what this is intended to do.
Okay, thank you. Beth, did you have a question?
Hi, yes, thank you. I just wanted to mention about the loading.
Hi, yes, thank you. I just wanted to mention about the loading zones. Just going back a little bit in the conversation that I think it's important we consider the placement of the loading zones in respect to where the loading into the building will actually happen. I think when the, at the select board meeting last night, the applicant was talking about the loading entrance for the for the Fells Hardware to be off of Vine Street. So I don't think, I think we want to make sure that we're not having trucks parking on Vine Street, trying to use that access if that's where the closest door is. So we just need to make sure that, you know, we're thinking about where the access in the building is and where it makes sense for the loading zones to happen and putting them in a place that people actually use and not use an untaxed and needed loading area on our residential street.
I believe the loading was gonna, the loading was going to be on Main with an, and then they would dolly, a dolly up Vine.
Right, so I just, we just need to make sure that's realistic for what people will actually do. You know, when they're bringing deliveries in, because we don't want to set up a situation that's unrealistic for what the is workable for that type of retail establishment.
What, it's Maureen, what kind of loading would we, maybe it's to Erica, would we expect for the cafe? I know for, I don't know, other parts of town, the small, I don't know if I call them takeouts, but the smaller, even the smaller places do have delivery.
I mean, I would expect it to be similar to what you see at other cafes in town. That's, that's a reasonable expectation. You know, that doesn't get broken out in a traffic study. It really is just the the full trip generation. So I think that's working with those tenants to making sure that the size of the trucks that they're bringing are are appropriate and that they're, you know, have a safe place to park and unload at a time that that works well to not impact the the traffic around it.
I'm catching this phrase, the size of the trucks are appropriate. Who polices that?
That would have to be a, an agreement or a policy thing. Otherwise, they're just going to bring whatever size truck they want to.
Then you still might, even after all that.
That is true.
However, if there was a loading area that was specifically designated with an appropriate time during low traffic times, that might be, that might address that a little bit better. Because regardless whether, if this site has restrictions on that, all the other, all the other sites on Main Street are still having all different sized trucks come in for delivery. I just think it's really important to address that delivery area and the time that those, that area is set aside for deliveries. Which then leads to my other question is, I know that you are going to review their recommendations of the management plan for the lift and how that was going to work. Did you get, I have not seen the, that management plan or how any of that is to be? And then like the, you know, there's certain like rules and regs in place to make sure that the impact on the surrounding neighborhood is minimized from that.
We had a conversation about the lift service. And honestly, when I looked at the number of vehicles that this is going to generate, I wasn't struck by a concern related to queuing and associated with the lift service. We also took a look at the sort of queuing garage area before the lifts that is under the building. And that can store two vehicles while you're waiting for the lift service. So through those conversations, I got comfortable with with this lift service and its ability to handle the the number of vehicles that is going to be coming through this. And as you are aware, Elmwood Ave is a rather small street with low generation on it. So my concerns were quelled in terms of that queue, that queue as being associated with that lift service. I didn't get the actual, the specs for the lift. We more just had conversations about the number of minutes it takes for the lift to arrive and service and, you know, looking at the number of vehicles per hour, it didn't strike me as being an issue.
So as from how it works operationally, one side goes is for the loading, the other one's for unloading. So you would come in on the right side and you'd sit in queue, waiting for if the elevator is down, waiting for it to come, and then you load it on the right side, go take it down to the parking area, back out and then go park. And then when you come, bring it back up, you come in on the left side, because there's two elevators. Is that correct? So there needs to be signage that you come in through the right, exit through the left side of that garage?
Yes, I would probably defer to the the proponent on on that question.
Yeah, Ted, would you, could you answer my question? Just to make sure that it's clearly defined, so you don't end up with, what I'm worried about with those elevators, as I've worked in buildings with them, they, if you don't have it clearly defined where they wait to go down, they end up blocking, so a car comes up in the elevator and then they can't get out because someone's blocking them and waiting for the elevator to load it. I just want to make sure that there is really clear signage there, so you don't end up with this huge issue of people trying to get in and all backed up on Elmwood.
I just agree with your comment, so I would agree that signage needs to be clear. Another component here is that these are not, well, I say, these are tenants, users of the building, so the familiarity is going to be there, orientation on the lift would be a part of, you know, their, their, you know, they're occupying their rooms, so spaces. So I feel like between familiarity and signage, this should be able to be accommodated. Additionally, there was a question around the scissor lift and maintenance. The, there would be a maintenance contract, which is a twenty-four hour service. And as well, the unique aspects about this company is that they use a scissor lift, which is very common and can be serviced by any elevator company. So it's not a special crew, or it's not custom, and this is not a commodity, a part of this particular company. So that was one of the advantages that we saw with this system.
Well, the, the reason, actually, I know you're like, well, all the tenants will be using it, but if you uncouple it, you may not actually have people who own, right, in that building using it. You may have people coming in from outside and around the neighborhoods and stuff renting spaces. So that's why I'm like, it makes me a little nervous to take that recommendation, Erica. But when you look at it, you look at the long term, it's beneficial to the developer now, but at the long term, is it really beneficial for the whole area to do that? Will it really get, you know, encourage people to not have cars at this point? It depends. So I just, I want to look at that, think about that a little bit more, that recommendation on your part. But thank you very much. Other members of the planning board? Sorry, kind of took over there for a little bit.
I just want to make sure we, is it Erica or who's going to draft this? What was it you called it, Erica, where we have the loaded, what the nature of the loading, the time of the loading? Is that going to be you who drafts it? So it goes with the, what, the special permit approval?
Yeah, so I, I mean, I think that's really, that's up to, my recommendation is going to be that we provide specific locations for loading that are, as you know, as Beth said, a convenient location enough that we feel like someone will actually use it. And then it needs to have designated time periods that are not going to be impactful to, you know, traffic. And we can even look at the demand for on-street parking hours and make sure that it's not, you know, peak demand for the on-street parking, you know, to impact this, it's too great a number. But in terms, you know, I can come up with that recommendation and provide it in my response to their comments. But I'm not going to go further than that memorandum, so I think you could utilize that to, I don't know what the next steps would be to go forward to make sure that that ends up in writing somewhere.
Oh, we need it from somebody, and I think you're the expert. And then also just to, did I hear you say that some kind of restriction on the size of the delivery truck?
I just thought that that might be, you know, you don't, I think you don't want like a WB sixty-seven showing up on the front of this.
I don't know what that is, but it sounds bad.
Like a tractor trailer.
Yeah. We see some, there's some amazingly large trucks that really get stuck in this town. And we're all forced into the oncoming traffic and it's no fun.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to quickly say to the question around the, to locating the specific areas for loading, would it be helpful if we just located them on our site plan and submitted them for Erica's review?
Yes, I think that would be good. Members of the planning board?
Sure.
That sounds fine. I, I wanted to raise a question of people loading and the entry and the garage being really close to each other. I'm curious, you, you had further study on both sightlines and auto turn analysis. So I would like your, your thoughts about people pick up and drop off at the front door and potential safety or interference with the parking garage doors.
Yep. So again, I think the the volume here is relatively low. You know, you're looking at a car every four minutes roughly. So I don't think that that level is going to cause some major kind of conflict points in this area. But I do agree that, you know, having the entrance in the same areas that garage does present some complications. I know the bike room is there as well. The intention behind the kind of audible and visual indicators for when the lift arrives, I think is a, is a good, a good piece to this. We did look at sightlines. I got those sight, sightlines today. But they are appropriate for what this, this space is. And we did look at auto turn as well. I had a little bit of concern about, you know, that unrestricted kind of free-for-all parking that's happened on Elmwood Ave on the south side across from the garage. Could cause some issues with vehicles turning out of the driveway, so want to make sure that that, that gets rectified as part of this response. But in terms of activity levels, I felt comfortable with the way that this was all laid out.
Did you, did you observe, I don't know the backside of the, the, what was the liquor store or still is the liquor store, the, the building on the south? Are there deliveries taking place back there and the reduction of this, the width of Elmwood Ave? Is that going to be? Is that going to be kind of a, if someone's pulled over? I guess maybe it's similar to having people pull up on the curb and the sidewalk anyway. But, you know, it's like trying to take a one-way street and allow someone to get by if there's, you know, an extended wait for someone to come out of the building. Or, you know, it from, to go to residential versus commercial on this street is going to be, it's going to change the way the streets use.
I agree with you. Yes, I did see, there, there are always vehicles when I've been out there on, you know, on Street View End when I visited, again, on that south side of Elmwood Ave. But they are up on the sidewalk today, and if you're going to be bringing that curb out, there is some challenge there. I actually hadn't seen this with the curb coming out on the south side until now. So I will make sure that I am comfortable with whatever that layout would be because I do think if there is the curb available to park against it or load against it is going to happen here. So we need to make sure that if there's parking on both sides with a loading zone, that there'd be a clear path. It looks like we maintain twenty feet on Elmwood Ave. That would not be enough for parking on both sides and the vehicle to go through. So we need to have curb regulation on one side of the street if we're going to allow for, if we're going to move the curb there.
This is Beth. That was actually one of my questions because the, the plan that's up right now that was shown to the select board last night doesn't show a crosswalk across Main at Elmwood, but the previous plan that Dennis was referring to does. So is the applicant proposing to install a crosswalk and curb cut at this location? I'm not sure that is a question for Erica to answer, probably more for the applicant to answer.
That is not, that is not something I saw, so that's a.
If I can, Ed, this is Dennis, if I could add something, I've recommended that, since this is the end of retail on Main Street coming from downtown, that, and there is an expression of the building opening up to the retail, the ramp going up and everything. It seemed logical that someday there would be retail across the street and that a crosswalk there made a lot of sense. And one of the reasons for the bump out was, since you can't park within twenty feet of the, the corner anyway, is you could incorporate, make it a safer crosswalk visually. And I looked to Erica, to who knows this better than I do. But there could also be a few bike spaces in that extension out. So it might solve a lot of problems.
Well, people cross there right now anyway, I do, to go to the liquor store or the hardware store. If you're, if you live south of there, you park on the right side and then you walk across.
Well, we were thinking of naming it after you, but it was too demeaning, so we didn't proceed with that. But you're, yeah, the use is there.
So I, I actually, I, I don't have a problem with the idea of putting a crosswalk here. There is one at Vine Street and Main Street on the other side of the intersection, yeah. It's, it was requested by the residents at six sixty-six Main Street several years ago. So I don't have a problem. I think it makes sense. As Heather said, there's lots of people who will want to cross here to get to the hardware store. I think it needs to be clarified whether, I guess, number one, if there is a crosswalk to go in there, that's something that has to be approved by the select board, the street commissioners. Number two, if we're going to do a, if we're, if the proposal is to do a bump out there, you know, is the applicant instructing it, installing it? And then we need to look at drainage to make sure we're not impeding flow down Main Street. So there's a lot of kind of elements that go into creating a bump out. Not to say that it shouldn't be looked at, but we just need to understand how that will play out as part of this special permit process.
Beth, two things. One is, I'm the one that's recommending it to the town, and I specified working with the town engineer. This is, I, I think the town should do this. I think it helps the building. And as the chair mentioned, it's, it's being used that way now anyway. And, and I do it, when I'm there, I cross there as well, looking at the site.
Yeah, so again, I, I don't have any concerns with the concept of the crosswalk. It's just not for me to approve. But if, if there is the proposal for a bump out there, that should be investigated further as part of this special permit process and be the responsibility of the applicant, not the town of Winchester, to install in that area.
Just quickly echo what Beth is touching on here, just looking at it quickly. I think you're going to run into some challenges with the driveway aprons at the gas station across the street. And I can see catch basins on both sides of kind of where you're pointing on both sides of Main Street there. So I do think there is going to be some just design challenges associated with the crosswalk here. It's not going to be just a, a quick, a quick paint. I believe there's also a light pole. I don't know if it would go directly there or if it's really just a matter of capturing that demand line and potentially looking to install one, you know, in the vicinity.
Not to get off topic, but the trees, I had asked, and I didn't hear, they had added a tree at the corner of Vine and Main. If you can see it, it's a square green at the very top right there. I had asked that you make sure you, you check that to make sure visibility, turning that corner with especially with the cars parked, especially if they're larger cars like trucks and the visibility of the cars coming in the opposite direction. Because it's actually difficult because it's a very narrow street to get out of that. So I just want to make sure that tree isn't blocking the visibility for those to turn. But the real reason to get out of the topic of that is, Dennis, did you review the lighting plan for the street?
No, not yet. Not yet, no.
Okay, because that, that, it just made me think about in terms of the walkways and visibility and that, the lighting of that, if they're, if they're pulling everything up pretty much in that whole area to rebuild it, we want to make sure that the lighting poles and everything match what's in downtown Winchester.
Absolutely, and we would work with Beth on, on that as well.
And Brian, with those trees as well, now that I think about it? And um Brian, with those trees as well, now that I think about it, can you double check with design review? Um, when we did the MBTA and they had those those trees and grates, they had specific way they wanted them to stay watered. I just want to make sure that we know that they put that in, they've put that consistently inside all the projects for the Center Business District. I just don't remember what their recommendation is when they are in this situation.
Our recommendation is to have it irrigated.
Yeah, there's something about the grates. I can't remember what they recommended to do with it.
It was allowing, it was a specific type of grate or not, uh, to to allow for growth. I I can get the condition and put it in.
Yeah, thank you. And then the other question is um is the electrical power for those to light them up since all of downtown gets lit up? Make sure there's electrical sources out there for the DPW. The totally, uh, sorry, I'm sorry, Erica, that got me off, but I wanted to make sure we addressed that. Um, any other questions for the traffic?
Um, I just want to make sure that um now that you've seen, Erica, you've seen this new plan that the select board has seen. And and um, did I understand it's been approved? Um, that the twenty-foot width of Elmwood Ave that that your study take into consideration, the the new, this new development?
Yep, absolutely. Um, I wrote that down, and that is um, that will be part of my response to this um document that I received today. And just really quick, um, for that tree, uh, we did get, I got uh site triangles for um Vine Street at Main Street and Elmwood Ave at Main Street. Um, and I will double check to make sure that I'm comfortable with the placement of that tree.
Thank you. Other members of the board? All right, thank you. Um, Brian, did you have any questions of Erica?
Um, no, I think the only kind of real kind of loose end in general related to traffic and transportation is is this sidewalk cross? I'm sorry, is this crosswalk across Main and if there is a bump out or not? I think that's the only thing that the board would probably have to determine whether that's um, you know, a mitigating um, i- i- you know, if that if that needs to be mitigated or not. Um, so that's a decision for the board uh that you need to make, not now, but um, but that should be on your, on the, on the horizon for next, next time.
Thank you, Brian. With that, um, I'd like to ask Beth and and you as well, Brian, to update all your recommendations to the planning board. So you had done an originally over overview of the project from the very first. Um, and I I would like you to update that and provide all your recommendations.
That sounds good.
Do the same as well?
Yeah, so we haven't really provided written comments because we've been relying on the peer reviews by tool and BHB. And I think, you know, until particularly the flooding and um issues that BHB has looked at are further resolved. I don't think I'm ready to put anything in writing just yet.
Okay, so when you are ready, let us know. Sound good. And then the other thing I wanted to make sure that we address, which I had asked for, is the affordable housing units. I would like them identified in the plans, Ted. Where you are saying you'd like them, they need to be evenly dispersed.
So I'll just, I'll just jump in super quick um, you know, about that. So they're in the middle of talking with the Housing Partnership Board. We I I actually sent a draft plan over to the planning board this afternoon evening, um, sho- showing that plan. Um, and John Serbeer also wrote an email this evening saying that they're nearly there and we're we're almost there. But um, it it said that it's actually proba- um, they're going to get confirmation from DHCD that the plan confirms uh with their guidelines. So it doesn't happen uh again where something gets approved. This is what happened at Winning Farm was uh, something was approved, um, at the affordable housing requirements, and it didn't end up passing DHCD, and then there was, uh, it was a back and forth. So we're trying to get that like pre-approval, uh, but that is um going strong.
Yeah, well, what happened with Winning Farm is they didn't actually define the specific units and some information on there. So when, right, so then after the permit came, they played fast and loose a little bit with the units. And I would really like to make sure that that is locked in and done done with.
Yeah, no, and we will, we will be there, and it looks like, uh, according to John Serbeer's email from the Housing Partnership Board, is that that will have a bow on it by next week.
Okay, that's wonderful news. Yeah, did you have any thoughts on how you had wanted to mention?
I had just wanted to bring up what Brian just said. And I think one of the problems with Winning Farm, but go back in time, is that the, we did not put in precise enough language in our approval of the subdivision. Um, and so I think that's something we need to look at and rectify, and that's one of the things I talked about in my update at the beginning of this planning board meeting. So. Thank you.
Thanks, De'ad. All right, so um all those documents um for the review of the ninth will get the Friday before the meeting? Brian?
Yeah.
And then with that, can you please make sure those get loaded as soon as we receive them on our website so that the public has access to all those documents prior to the meeting as well?
Yeah, the the packet, the planning board packet uh on that Friday, you, that's when they'll be uploaded. So it at the same time that you get the packet, um, the the, they will be, they should be up on the site.
And can you just tell the public where they can access that the Friday before the meeting?
Sure, under the, if you go to, um, I mean, I can e- email people, but I mean, if you go to the planning board's website on Winchester.us, we do have a current project list. And uh, this is one of them, and it will be located, the most recent packet will be located under six fifty-four Main Street. So Winchester.us, then to the planning board, uh, and then recent projects.
Thank you. Any other comments for members of the planning board?
Madam Chair, this is Dennis again.
Yep.
Just a a thought, uh, other cities and towns um state and their hearing that uh building occupancy will um to gain building occupancy, you have to meet all the conditions. So if you were concerned about affordable housing locations, you could hold up the building occupancy permit. It's only happened once in my life, but it's an amazing uh vehicle to make sure if there's an issue like the affordable housing unit locations, um, you won't have a problem.
Is that including temporary occupancy?
Uh, it.
Uh, the building department doesn't do temporary occupancy permits. And um, to Dennis's point, we use this as a tool all the time to get developers to do what we want them to do before the project is closed out.
The building department never issues temporary building occupancy?
No, they only issue final COs, but they've run into issues in the past with the temporaries.
Okay, good for them.
It may have been done in the past, but it's no longer done. That's my understanding.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis, for that recommendation.
Sure, it it helps.
All right, so at this point, I am going to, uh, can we get a motion to continue the hearing to uh February ninth? Uh, I believe eight o'clock would be good, so it can start at seven thirty, go through updates. Um, and then we'll dive into this, and it will be the, the majority of the entire meeting will be dedicated to six fifty-four Main Street on the ninth.
And then thirty minutes of Washington and Swanton, by the way, just want to make clear that you, we still also have Washington Swanton as well as some other ZBA permits. So we might be doing like we did last time and flying through, you know, five ZBA permits in thirty minutes or something like that.
Yep.
Wow, so I think that we should be thinking about the whole evening. Um, Heather?
I ju- I mean, I really want to do sixty, six fifty-four as like a standalone meeting.
So we do have to deal with the ZBA, oh.
No.
We've got to get our comments in to on Washington and Swanton. It's not a small point, and it shouldn't be at ten o'clock at night.
But we can start earlier or we can split it into two, because I want to, I want to make sure that we give the public plenty of time.
Well, I agree.
And so um I anticipate that's going to be substantial time, and I am not going to cut them short.
Yeah, yeah, no, nope, no.
Well, I, why don't we, will the board contemplate meeting at seven?
I'm fine with that.
Can Heather, Hannah, at Cheryl?
Are we talking about for the six fifty-four one?
Yeah, for the next meeting on the ninth of going from seven until ten instead of seven thirty.
Um, is it unlikely we will be voting on anything in that first half hour?
Oh, but that's when we need to discuss and get our recommendations on the um RFP for Washington at Swanton. And um Cheryl has to be there because she's the person um who would be carrying the message back, although we'd send something probably in writing, but we do want to have a call up.
Seven, we could kick off seven and do the ZBA recommendations right off the bat.
Oh, but I want, but the one I'm worried would get cut short is the Washington at Swanton.
No, I know. So we could do, if we start at seven, we could do the, we could give thirty minutes, and we're going to have to move very quickly, and we won't be able to open it up. Um, and move very quickly to our recommendations since we're not the permit authority. We're just giving recommendations. We can move through those quickly from seven to seven thirty, then move to Washington Swanton for thirty minutes, you said, and then we're at, we're at eight o'clock, and then the rest of the meeting is dedicated.
I, uh, even though I'm not a member, I think that's a great idea, and I would vote for that.
And and, you know, Heather, I know you're, um, seven o'clock is hard, but then seven to seven thirty, if we have a quorum, we just work through the ZBA petitions at that time, as long as we have a quorum.
And I'm calling for seven. This is Cheryl.
Okay, so um.
I got it all written down. I got it all written down.
Um, so I would like to entertain a motion that we continue the hearing to the time certain of February ninth, twenty twenty-one at eight PM.
Go move.
Seconded.
Uh, all those in favor? Roll call vote, please.
Hannah, aye.
Jurious, aye.
Um, Meister, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Von Mary, aye, motion passes, five oh. Thank you to all the public who came for this item. Uh, thank you, Ted and your team. Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Erica. Thank you, Beth. A lot of people are working very hard on this. Thank you all for your time, and Brian, obviously, you know, I thank you a lot, so. Um, moving onward, uh, we have, we wanted to do the meeting minutes. Um, so I did put the master plan implementation committee on here. I'm going to take it off. It was a placeholder in case we had time. We don't have time, so let's focus on getting these meeting minutes um posted. Um, the meeting minutes came in our packets from our last meeting for those. Um, so they're not uh joined with our packet for today, but they came in our last packet. We just did not get to them. Um, so we have, um, should we just start with a date? Maureen, do you have yours in front of you?
I do.
Are you starting with October fifth?
Yeah, in fact, I can say this, Heather. Um, although there are small edits, there's not, I'm very small. There's really nothing here of substance. So we could just if, see if anybody else has um edits that are substantive that we need to discuss. Otherwise, I'd just move to approve all the minutes, October fifth, sixth, thirteenth, and nineteenth. But let's see if anybody else has comment.
Members of the planning board, did you have any feedback on the meeting minutes?
Um, I just had a few small edits, which um I don't think are substantive. Um, unfortunately, I am not at home, and I left my marked up comments at home, but I do have pictures of some of them. I can um send those on to Nancy via email if that's okay, but I don't have any substantive ones, no.
Um, Heather, Hannah?
I don't have them in front of me.
Cheryl Wolf?
I don't have any comments.
Okay, um, I just, my one thing is on the transcripts, I believe is the only place I found it. My last name, it's lowercase v with a space between the N and the M, capital M. I just wanted that corrected in the transcripts. And so it's right in the attendees, but it's not in the who's speaking. Otherwise, I didn't feel that is appropriate for me to change any of the transcripts or the review meetings review of October fifth.
No, I want to mention that on the transcript, I didn't put, I did not touch that at all.
Yeah, I don't want to ta- I just want to make sure that it's my actual proper last name, Von Mary, with the lowercase and the space. But otherwise, I don't want to touch it.
I know that on one of these, and I don't, unfortunately, I apologize, I don't have it in front of me. Uh, when the planning board voted aye, it was transcribed as just the single letter capital I rather than the word A Y E. And I don't know if that was in the transcript or not.
Well, I I do remember catching something like that in the minute, not in the transcript. I just left it alone.
Okay, well, then maybe it's the minute. If you've caught it, then that's fine.
Then at least two, I read it these couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, and anyway, I'm I'm fine with, um, I I I move um that we accept, oh dear, how many are there?
Uh, De'ad, it is in the transcripts where you see.
It is in the 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 quadruple.
The second to last page is Jurious, aye, Hannah, aye, Meister, aye, Von Mary, aye.
Yeah, that was the only change I would, I think I made to the transcripts.
It's interesting, the select board go yes, we go aye.
Yeah, we're so much more cool.
I did pick that up. I mean, the things you learn when you read a transcript.
Yeah, I mean, next we'll be doing Speak Like a Pirate's Day.
Uh, but it is in the transcript on the second to last page, Nancy. Uh, by the way, also, thank you so much for doing those transcripts. I know that that was not a uh pleasant job to do, but I thank you very much for doing that.
You're very welcome.
Um, after we make this motion, I would like to um bring up at some point what we now do with the transcript and our original question or original uh query to the select board about revisiting, which I have not yet had a response to.
All right, so what's the, what's the motion on the table?
I thought I made a motion to minutes, and I gave the date. I think that it's all there.
You did, yeah, the fifth, sixth, and the thirteenth.
And.
The nineteenth.
And the nineteenth.
Yes.
Including the transcript of the fifth, so we have meeting minutes on the fifth and the transcript of the same meeting. Correct?
Anyway, you have, gosh, uh, that was.
There was a second, De'ad, you seconded it?
I will second it.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Hannah, aye.
Jurious, aye.
Um, Meister, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Von Mary, aye, motion passes, five oh.
And um, just, I know Nancy listens. I will put these in the bin for um for Nancy again.
And I will.
There will be, as I say, there's some small edits for these.
And I will send my edits to Nancy via email.
Thank you, and then we'll go through the next set of planning board minutes in our next, when we can. I don't think we'll have time on the ninth, but in case. Um, De'ad, you wanted to talk about how to deal with those meeting minutes?
Um, well, I think that this is probably something we need to put on the agenda. I don't think this is something we can just pop up. But now that we have a transcript and we had a motion by the planning board to ask the select board to look at the circumstances around the vote, we need now need, and I haven't heard a response from them. So um, I think it's imperative that we at least get a response from the select board, one way or the other. I think it's inappropriate for a board to not respond to another board. So I I think that for procedural reasons, at least, we should go through another round of communications with the select board so that they actually hopefully respond to our concerns.
That will be put on our agenda to February twenty-third then.
Yeah, I know. I mean, it's, it's.
We're just so busy.
I understand, you know, as time goes on, people's interest in matters dissipates. But I mean, this was a significant the board felt it was significant enough.
This is gonna just fade away. I think it's gonna.
Yeah, I I I I'm not happy with that occurrence, even though that's maybe what happens.
Um, okay, well, we'll put it on, Brian, will you add it on our, on our notes that we have for the twenty-third?
I mean, if the rest of the board doesn't feel like we should continue this, then it's, well, we should talk about it at the, at the, yeah, when it's on the agenda, okay.
Question, do you want it on the agenda, members of the board? De'ad does.
Um, yeah, I'll support De'ad.
Okay, I think it's good. So the majority of us want it, I'll put it on the agenda. Um, to decide how we wanna proceed, if at all.
Put what on the agenda?
How did, we, we have the transcripts from the October fifth meeting. And we had sent a letter to the select board regarding that meeting and they declined to respond. And so De'ev is wondering, would like to have, bring into conversation if we should respond to them not responding to another elected board's request to meet with them.
Oh, okay.
Uh, okay. Sounds good. Um, so with that, if there's any other items, uh, it is time to adjourn at ten oh six. Oh, we're not too bad today, everyone. Thank you.
Yeah, we dropped out a whole meeting with the Concom.
Yeah, well, I would have, I would have stopped the subdivision and rescheduled that one out, but, um, to get that in. So Brian, where is Concom gonna come in? Actually, is Beth still here?
Uh,
No.
No, um, but so the thing is, it's not like we were, the at our last meeting, Beth had suggested that we could benefit from hearing the, um, the conversation, not so much that we were gonna go to Concom and be active participants. Um, it was more of, we should hear about this, uh, about this, um, the solution that they have and then any issues that they might have, and then that could potentially change the design of the, of the building. Um, outside of that, we were basically just gonna hear a presentation.
And did the presentation take place or what happened?
So as far as I, yeah, as far as I could tell, it looks like it did take place. Um, and that, uh, the, uh, it's possible that we could, um, you know, try to get Luke from VHB. He's the consultant, Luke Boucher, um, to, to, to come to the meeting. Though the whole point was obviously to kind of, uh, get two meetings out of that one meeting with him. Uh, because technically Luke Boucher from VHB is actually not our consultant. Uh, he's technically the Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
So it, it was trying to make that work. It, it just didn't. Um, I'll talk to Beth afterwards and see if we really need an actual presentation or if, once that, once that peer review comes back and then, then she'll have more to say. I personally don't think, uh, if, you know, i- i- if Beth is, is happy, that's obviously what we care about the most. And it hurts to get it based upon the consultant, so I think we could just rely on Beth here. I don't think we need VHB to come in, but that's your call.
Okay. Well, she said when she, um, when she finished Concom, she would provide an updated recommendation and get
Yeah, I think that'll be enough.
If, um, I think with that recommendation, if it comes out, if members of the board want them included into our agenda, they just need to like respond to you only that they would like it added into the agenda, the consultant comes to us or if you have questions. Sound good to the planning board? Did everyone follow that?
I mean, it's basically rely on, rely on Beth until the next memo and we'll see what happens. I mean, that's the set.
Yeah, and you decide if you need, if you need to
Yeah.
speak to the consultants, members of the planning board, if you decide you need to speak to the consultants for Concoms. Speak up, please let Brian know.
Technical, no.
Yeah, um, but, so there we go. Um, so if you do speak up, let Brian know and I will add it to our agenda. Otherwise, um, we'll, we'll leave it with Beth. So.
Great.
Um, so that's a scheduling item that we will just take out for now. And with that, I would love to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
So seconded.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Hannah, aye.
Gerius, whoopee.
Meister, aye.
Uh, Wolf, yes. So boring.
We're going from yippies eyes and yes. Von Mary, aye. Motion passes, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. We will see you back on the night. And thank you, WinCam, as always. Everyone, good night.
Good night, everyone. Thanks, everyone.